One minute to air. We are now streaming.
Happy Monday, everybody. We got back from summer break here in City Council chambers for our City Council meeting tonight on Monday, August the 7th, 2023, here at 7:00 PM in City Hall chambers. We certainly want to welcome all of you who have joined us tonight in attendance, and we'd like to welcome those who are on the Internet as well. Please join me in a moment of silent meditation as we get ready for the people's business this evening. Thank you so much, everybody. We will now have our pledge of allegiance, and Councilwoman Freeman will lead us in that.
Thank you if you're able to stand and join us in the salute of the flag.
(Inaudible)
All right, Madam Clerk, if you will call our role.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor O'Neill.
I am present.
Mayor Pro Tem Middleton.
Here.
Councilmember Caballero.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Present.
Councilmember Halsey Hyman.
Present.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
I'm here.
Thank you.
This is our first of the month, and our virtue for this month is compassion. It's compassion. So, and this is our only ceremonial item, and so as I finish up and walk back, in order to expedite time, I'm going to ask our Mayor Pro Tem to pick it up to lead us through the announcement portions after I finish reading, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, here we go. Whereas our daily lives are filled with information regarding crime, violence, inequity, and disaster, often causing feelings of helplessness, and whereas the many daily acts of extending patience and kindness that occur in our community are largely inconspicuous and unobtrusive, and whereas by recognizing the need for extending grace, being patient, and showing compassion, all members of our community will be made aware of the importance. Whereas the purpose of Compassion Month is to remember to be patient with others and that everyone is essential, every life has value, and our different paths give us various advantages and obstacles. And whereas when we extend grace and show compassion, we consider those differences, and we are prioritizing understanding, breaking barriers, and empowering one another. And whereas by showing humility, we are striving for a sense of belonging and creating a community that is welcoming, inclusive, kind, and a safe place to live, work, and play. And whereas the city of Durham honors those who positively influence our community. Now therefore, I, Elaine M. O'Neill, Mayor of this great city of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the month of August 2023 as Compassion Month in Durham, and hereby urge all residents to practice showing compassion, spreading kindness and respect, generosity and consideration of others at all times. Witness my hand and the corporate seal of the city of Durham. This is the seventh day of August 2023.
My thanks to her honor for that wonderful proclamation on compassion. Good evening, colleagues. Good evening to everyone in the chamber, all who are watching, whatever platform you may be watching. Colleagues, welcome back. Our first council meeting, official council meeting after our break, Monday night council meeting. I want to, with the mayor's permission and direction, go now to council announcements, and I will first look to my left and yield to any colleagues. Councilmember Hyman, good evening.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, to my colleagues, to our residents of Durham. Welcome. Oh goodness, am I speaking into the mic? I'm forgetting, right? Just wanted to, again, welcome our residents, but I also wanted our residents in Durham to keep Pastor Tim Moore of the Greater Walltown United Holy Church in Durham in your prayers. On Saturday night, his establishment church went up in flames. I was able to go out myself, Councilwoman Freeman, and the mayor to just kind of give our condolences and just be there with the community. I will say that I also want to do a special shout-out to Fire Department and EMS. I really saw firsthand what they do. So again, that particular church also does, they feed the homeless, and so they didn't let this stop them. They said they're going to continue to feed the homeless, and they're going to do that within, in the parking lot. So I just wanted you to kind of just lift them up and wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you for that, council member. Colleagues, to my left, Councilmember Johnson, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you, everyone. It's great to be back with you all. I hope everyone had a great break and is refreshed and recharged and ready to continue our work together. I just have one request of my colleagues, which is for an excused absence for our work session on September 7th. I will be traveling to St. Louis for the Local Progress Conference, and I need to arrive before that work session. So just requesting an excused absence for that day. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Still looking to my left? Councilmember Williams, good evening.
Thank you. It's good to be back, and it's good to see everyone. There are a lot of back-to-school events going on, so I wouldn't even start to try and announce them all, but there is one that I think is really important for the Hillside community. The new band director at Hillside High School is Jordan Jones. Jordan was a drum major when I was assistant band director there, and now full circle, he's there, and he is trying his best to unite the alumni. So the Hillside High School alums are coming back together on August 19th at 4:30 for the Sting Fling. Let's get out and support these kids as we're rebuilding the band program over there. We're going to do the same for Southern Durham and try to do the others for the other high schools as well. So that's it. 4:30 PM. Right now, I believe, is about 200 alums registered, so let's make this a really big deal for the Hillside High School community. 4:30 PM on August 19th, Sting Fling.
Thank you, council member. Her honor will have the last word, so I'll look now to my right. Any colleagues? Councilmember Freeman, good evening.
Thank you. I also did want to extend that great thanks for our Fire Department and our EMS and police. Just noting, there was a lot of manpower and womanpower at work out there that night and throughout the night. It was really unfortunate to see the church burnt as badly as it was. I think that fire lasted about three hours. And to all those folks in the neighborhood who were bearing that brunt for the evening, I do want to say thank you. And to build on to that, just noting that Reality Ministries actually held their first disability pride parade, and had a great opportunity to reflect on a huge population of our community that has often been overlooked, and it's really great to have the chance to sit back and look at what is possible when you put together folks with solutions. And I am overjoyed to say that this was the month that my sister passed last year, and it has really been hard for my family. It's definitely been incredibly different than I would have expected, but I want to appreciate Reality Ministries for creating that space and giving me the opportunity to reflect. Lastly, I did want to bring forward consideration requests from the Durham Committee on the Affairs of Black People. There was a request shared with each of us by email and by phone call around the SCAD proposal, and so I spoke with the mayor about it and asked if we could add that to our other items, and so additional items, and so I'll look for us to have just a brief discussion to figure out whether or not it's something we could adhere to as far as postponing that SCAD proposal conversation for a little while. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. And council member, I will say, I think, and the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, since it is attached to a public hearing, that the appropriate time for us to discuss any delay would be at the actual time it's scheduled rather than prior to that. But I appreciate the, it's noted, and we will certainly take it up. Thank you. Councilmember Caballero, good evening.
Sorry about that. Good evening, everyone. Good to see you all. Good to be back in chambers. I also need an excused absence for Thursday, September 7th work session, so we'll be asking my colleagues to grant that. I am also going to the conference, the Local Progress Conference. Other than that, August will be busy. I know lots of us are getting kids ready to go to school. At this point of the year, it's always time. I always think it's, it'd be real helpful if school had just already started. So hang in there, parents and caregivers. We're at the end of our summer journey.
Thank you, council member. I'll just simply associate myself with all of the wonderful announcements my colleagues have made, and that'll be it for me, and I'll yield back to her honor. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. And just to follow up on the request that Councilwoman Freeman, in terms of the request for discussion, that item is on the work session for Thursday, and we can have that discussion at that time. So for all those who are interested, we will have consideration of the SCAD proposal this Thursday at 1:00 PM. I only have a couple of announcements. This summer was quite busy for all of us, and like life goes, we all had some sad times and some happy times. I did have some city time to tour some other city departments, and I just want to give them a shout-out. I had an opportunity to go by General Services under the direction of Gina Fokes, and just a shout-out to Juliette Black, who got up in the bucket truck and went all the way up. We had a grand time over there. We had, they had a food truck. We just had a really good time in that space, and those are really the first first responders before the police officers can get out there, before the firefighters can get out there. A lot of these people are already out making a way for those folk to come through, so I wanted to give a shout-out to them. Also wanted to give a shout-out to a little bitty, little bitty unit here in the city called the Office of U-Works, and they have about five folks in that department, and they're located over in a beautiful space over in the, over the old W.G. Pearson School. And when I tell you they're a powerhouse, I had a great time with Laura Khalil and her staff over there. We'll be seeing more of her, I believe, this week at another meeting. She'll be presenting some of the great work that they are doing, and they are really doing an absolutely fabulous job. Also want to give a shout-out to Durham Parks and Rec. I had an opportunity to spend some hours with them, with Mary, and gosh, I'm blanking on the other young lady's name that took me around to about two or three different areas here in Durham under the auspices of Durham Parks and Recreation. So I just want you all to know Durham city, that you have a lot of great city employees who you probably never run into, but they are doing an absolute wonderful job in this city, and I can attest to the fact that they love this city and they are willing to work really hard for us. So those will conclude my announcements. I do want to just tell you in general that tonight we have at least two changes to our agenda. We have some guests in here tonight from our JFK Towers, which is a senior citizen home, and you know on Monday nights, because I don't want to get a whole lot of people kind of off-track as to what we're doing, but our seniors are here tonight, and I've talked with my city council colleagues, and we're going to move them up on the agenda so that they can be able to speak to us tonight about their concerns with JFK Towers and then get home in a timely fashion. So as soon as we're done with the consent agenda and our priority items, we will move right into hearing from our seniors this evening, and we will also move one additional as requested by our city council, which is a public hearing, item number 21, which is the limited obligation bonds. We will also take that up before we get to our actual public hearing items, and that will conclude my announcements before we go into our priority items. So I do want to entertain a motion to excuse both Councilwoman Johnson and Councilwoman Caballero from our September 7th meeting.
Still moved?
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilwoman Halsey Hyman, seconded by Councilwoman Williams. All those in favor, if we would just sign by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, having the same right, hearing none, that motion carries, and we will now move to our city manager for any consent items she may have.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the Durham City Council. The city manager's office has no priority items this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We will now turn to Attorney Don O'Toole, who is sitting in. He is a senior city attorney. You all have seen him before, but he's sitting in tonight for Attorney Kim Rayburg.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem and council members sitting in for Kim Rayburg this evening, and the city attorney's office has no priority items.
Thank you, Attorney O'Toole. Always glad to have you with us, and we now turn to our clerk and see if she has any items for priority consideration tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city clerk's office has no priority items this evening, and welcome back, everyone.
Thank you so much. We will now turn to our consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of items that the council has previously considered in a work session. All items on the consent agenda may be approved by a single vote of the council. Items may be removed from the consent agenda by a council member or a member of the public, and those items will be considered separately at the end of the meeting tonight. I will now read the entire agenda, beginning with the consent agenda. All right, we're actually starting with item number three, which is the Durham Affordable Housing Implementation Committee appointment. Number four, Durham Affordable Housing Implementation Committee mayor appointments. Item five, May and June 2023 bid reports. Number six, 2024 city council meeting schedule. Number seven is the contract amendment number one for Durham Workforce Development Board Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, NC Works Career Center Operations and Eckhart Youth Alternatives, Inc. Item eight, contract amendment number one for Durham Workforce Development Board Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, Adult and Dislocated Worker Program with Eckhart Youth Alternatives, Inc. Item nine is the amendment to the contract with the FMRT Group LLC for the provision of police psychological services for the city of Durham Police Department. Item number 10, we have one speaker from the public who has requested that this item be pulled, that's contract for the water quality web portal repair and maintenance for the storm water quality program. Item 11 is the contract amendment number two to professional services contract SW 47D Marine Road Bike and Pedestrian Improvements. Number 12, municipal agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation for bike facilities two, TIP number BL-0028. Item 13 is the municipal agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation for neighborhood bike routes two, TIP number BL-0031. Item 14 is the municipal agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation for Horton Road pedestrian facilities, TIP number BL-0063. Item 15 is consulting contract with Just Cities Collective LLC for the development of a transportation equity action plan. We now will turn to our general business agenda to be read into the record of public hearings. Item 16 is the zoning map change, Brightleaf North. Seventeen, consolidated annexation Fletcher Crossing. Item 18, zoning map change, Fairhaven Walk. Item 19 is the zoning map change, 602 North Hoover Road. Item 20, the consolidated annexations, 631 and 633 Clayton Road. Item 21 is the limited obligation bond series 2023. Now, there has been just one pulled item, which is item number 10, and so I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 10.
Moved?
Seconded.
Right, it's been moved by Councilwoman Williams, seconded by Councilwoman Freeman. All those in favor, we'll just do this by a voice vote unless you all have your clickers ready. Okay, let's do it by the clickers. Let's roll. All right, Madam Clerk, if you open the vote. We forgot about the clickers. All right, if you close the vote and report out.
Consent agenda passes 7-0.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is approved. We will come back to item 10 prior to going into our regular hearings, too. I believe Mr. James Chavis has pulled that item, and he is also a senior, so we'll be cognizant of that tonight. Otherwise, he would be last, I believe. So now we'll turn to our seniors who are here tonight to speak with us on JFK Towers. I will call five at a time. You don't have to, of course, come to the mic until it's your time to speak, but you will be given three minutes apiece. First, we will have Ms. Burris will be speaking first. Ms. Burris. I have no name on the second one, but they have a phone number and an address at 4900 North Roxbury Road, number 420. The last four digits of their number is 4735. I would just need for you to put your name on your card.
She's ready.
All right. The next person will be Mr. Joshua Allen, followed by Terrell Dungy and Felicia Kozar. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm glad you picked this month for compassion, because I'm going to say this real quickly. It's sad that as council members, that y'all have not learned yet to work in unity. You cannot move this city until you learn to get along yourself with each other, including supporting the mayor. Now, I went to JFK. I was so upset at what I saw, what I heard. I wish that when I got home that day, I could have said, Lord, if I had had enough money, I would have scooped every resident up in JFK and put them somewhere. Now, y'all sit here tonight like you got it going on, but I'm going to tell you one thing. If you live long enough, trouble going to do this. You need to stop acting like you're better than one another. Sewage stopped up, trash stopped up, elevator's not working. I'm a senior citizen. Most of them have health issues. When have you went out there and checked? I went out there. I was asked to come out there, not because I'm running a political campaign, because a lot of us don't show up until we run political campaigns, and you want the organizations to endorse you and all that kind of foolishness. That is irrelevant. I want y'all to start caring about citizens. People that put you in, that's us. You can pull all the organization you want to, but at the end of the day, it's us that vote you in. Period. Now, I am sick and tired of folk even walking over me and acting like I'm nothing until you want me to do something for you. I am somebody, and everybody here tonight is somebody. Now, crime, I got to throw this into. Getting shot at last Tuesday, I didn't hear from nobody but Councilwoman Freeman. I talked to Hyman, and the mayor called me. Where was the rest of y'all? And I mean, just pick up the phone. You love to text. Councilwoman Freeman texts me. Are you okay? I appreciate that, because this is the third time, and that last time I ran, I'm going to tell y'all something, I thought about my father being beat to death almost as a child. And we talk about gangs, take that out of your mouth, because gangs ain't the only ones doing the crime in here, in this city. These people need help. Let's stop running your mouth, stop running your mouth talking about help. Let's put some action to your words, because talk is cheap. I'm proactive, and I know what I'm talking about. You do some action, you'll move mountains. You can't move mountains until you do action. Stop doing so much policies and procedures, meetings, get off your behind, and come out here and see about us. Period.
I'm Phyllis Bryant, and I've lived at JFK Towers for 12 years while undergoing care here at Duke. During these years, Millenia has shown poor management of JFK Towers, poor oversight, resulting in hazardous conditions for residents, both elderly and disabled. These conditions are deplorable. As a property manager, I've got to seen that in my adult pre-disability days. I've seen how these conditions affect lives. My best friend is a 79-year-old tenant who was left without pest service for one month while dealing with bedbugs and heart conditions. No one should allow their grandparents or relatives to live in such conditions, yet every day on a roller, she went downstairs to ask for help. She did not receive it. She moved out at her own expense and with great effort by her family to get her out of there. She has lived there seven years. Maintenance is poorly qualified to handle even the most simple of repairs, such as a clogged drain or a faucet installation. Mine was put in wrong, hot to cold and cold to hot. Even I can do that. Elderly and disabled residents are currently without air conditioning in many units and dealing with sewage backups. Our trash chute is so infested with maggots that flies and gnats have taken up residents in the hallways. Drug dealers use the east stairwell as a back-and-forth access to deal drugs. Even with video evidence that I've provided, nothing is being done now over two and a half years. Currently, even with renovations, just today, I witnessed carpeting being installed on a nasty unmopped floor with an active leak just a few feet away. Millenia is good at giving excuses, one after another, and nothing is done. Please audit their records to ensure that basic building needs are being met while these renovations are ongoing, such items that you would consider basic, security, pest control, trash services, trash chute cleaning, and overall waste services, air conditioning and plumbing, as well as proper elevator service, contract paid. Waiting a month for pest service or a month for HVAC service, or even one tenant waiting two years without heating and air is an atrocity. Please do research on how many tenants at properties across our great nation owned by Millenia, who currently tenants have unsafe and unsanitary living conditions. Please act and limit access to any future funding until every deficit is remedied. Thank you.
Ma'am, ma'am, if you would, you can just sign it right here. Mr. Allen, Mr. Joshua Allen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. How you doing? We are like the young lady said, that we have problems with the elevators and stuff like that, and the renovations, when you get into a renovated apartment, nothing's not working right in there. It's been a lot of, you know, trash, not trash, sewage from the toilets, from the toilet, and that way the feces will come right back up, and it'll do the same thing in the sink also. So I bet you everybody's scared to drink the water. That's why I have... That's why I have brought some water the other day so that way I won't be in the faucet. You know, it's contaminated water and stuff like that. So the water's brown and stuff like that sometime, and you know, that's why you had to, especially when they cut the water off. The water stays off for around like possibly all day. So, and like I said before, and I'm not gonna stop saying it, they don't need to do no renovation. They need to go ahead and tear the place down and old enough to have to be rebuilt. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dungy, followed by Ms. Kozart. If you would just state your name once you get there, you'll be ready to go in three minutes.
Hi, good evening, Council. My name's Terrell Dungy. I'm a community organizer with American Friends Service, North Carolina. I've been working with the tenants of JFK Towers and like many of folks, I've heard about their conditions through the story that came out back in July, that Ruth brought the news coverage to the type of neglect people were living in. Actually, my first visit to the building, someone was being saved by the fire department because they were stuck in the elevator. And again, that's a regular occurrence in this building. So over the last couple of weeks, I've been working with tenants, with Ruth, Phyllis, and several others to make a list of the things that have gone wrong and then reasonable demands that they want to present to the city and to HUD about some of these conditions to hold them accountable. So I just wanna read that, that statement. So, "We, the tenants of JFK Towers, are coming together to get elected officials in the Department of Housing and Urban Development to call for a full building inspection of JFK Towers to address the dangerous living conditions we struggle with day in and day out. The property management company, Millenia Management Company, receives a nineteen million housing bond to rehabilitate JFK Towers, but the living conditions in this building have only gotten worse and more dangerous to those of us that call JFK our home. Many of our neighbors have made individual complaints about a host of things like lack of pest control and roach, and for roaches and bedbugs, plumbing stoppages, clogs, hot water shut-offs with no real notice, lack of security alarms on exit doors, inoperable clogged trash chutes and subsequent pests, cleanliness in public areas, lack of adequate cleaning, adequate clean laundry areas, unresponsive uncaring management, electrical issues, invoices not paid in a timely manner to contractors, unsafe unreliable access to these elevators, property damage or loss due to faulty appliances, plumbing, and pest, mold in homes and throughout the building. These issues continue to be ignored by management, so now neighbors have come together to hold Millenia accountable. None of us deserve to live in unsafe unsanitary conditions just because we have limited options of safe and affordable housing in our neighborhood. That's why the tenants of JFK Towers made the following list of demands. Again, getting a full building inspection of JFK Towers to identify work needs, to bring the building up to safety standards in non-renovated and renovated apartments, getting an inspection on elevators to have all three repaired or replaced to ensure they meet safety standards, having a fire code inspection to access, to assess if fire alarm is old and renovated in unrenovated apartments, including sound levels in the hallways, using emergency repairs to address the issues in the building, an audit of that nineteen million dollars to see how it's being spent for these tenants, as well as allowing residents to the table around who is hired to manage the building and who to maintain it, and testing of water and air quality.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dungy. If your three minutes are up, but if you have that list, please be sure and share it Ms. Kozart? Felicia Kozart?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Felisa Kozart, and I've lived at JFK Towers for eleven and a half years. Like to address the pest problem. There are gnats and flies. They are now in the entire building in resident apartments, hallways, lobby elevators, laundry room, common areas. There are roaches and bedbugs. They've all been contributed to, and because of a lack of extermination and treatment of the entire building, it's never been exterminated. Dumpsters overflowing with trash that have been allowed to sit for days and emptied and sweltering heat. Clogged and broken trash chutes where garbage has been allowed to sit and rest there for weeks, where flies have been laying eggs, and now there were maggots, and now they're flying all in the hallway. You have to hurry up and close your door so you don't get as many gnats and flies in. There is unsanitary, unhealthy, harmful living conditions and environment there. The floors, from first floor to seventh floor, were unswept, unmopped floors, dirty windows allowed to be this way for months. Rotting trash inside the building where trash has been placed in the hallways in front of the elevators because the chutes were broken and were never repaired. Broken elevators that are temporarily patched up to work for a while and then they break down again. Residents who have mobility issues, sight issues, who use scooters and rollers, who walk with canes, are left not being able to leave their apartments, or who are downstairs and not able to climb the stairwells to get to their apartments. Often, people are trapped in the elevators. They stop working with people on them, and that also goes for our visitors and our guests that come. EMS has often had to climb the stairwell to reach residents who dial 911 for medical emergencies when the elevators go out. There are numerous needed repairs that need to be done, from plumbing to leaking AC units, mold, windows with no screens, tubs and sinks that are backed up, just to name a few. So we at JFK Towers, who are here tonight, are pushing to have Millenia Housing Corporation held responsible and accountable for these ongoing problems that are never remediated, they're never fixed. And so we're constantly going through a vicious cycle of them over and over and over again. So we're asking for help. Thank you.
Our next five speakers, Shonta Vox, Lee, last name spelled M-O-A-V-E-N-Z-A-D-E-H. Sean Le, Shante Lovey, at forty-nine-hundred, phone number is nine eight eight four, okay? Last four digits. Mr. Jontay Dunston, and Ms. Andrea Hudson, and then Ms. Austin is the last group of speakers that I have.
Hi, my name is Shante. I'm here on behalf of, well, hello, everyone. I'm here on behalf of JFK. When I read a post on Facebook, it brought tears to my eyes how the seniors in my community are living. The seniors are living in deplorable conditions with backed-up sewage and bathtubs, mold and maintenance requests aren't getting fixed, and a slew of other things. It really makes me scared of becoming an elderly if I don't have a high income. Just because someone live in an income-based property and reports the situation, do we threaten to remove the person or just keep ignoring it because they, because they aren't living in a bit nice house or have a big income? We need to start showing empathy and realizing how you would feel if that was your mother or father. This is real Sydney, and you know, this really like got me shaking, and y'all really need to do something about this. This really doesn't make any sense, and I just hope y'all do something. Thank you.
My name is Lee Moavenzadeh, from Chapel Hill. Madam Mayor, City Council members, and residents of Durham, I have a dear friend who lives in JFK Towers, and when I saw her reports on Facebook, I was also shocked and outraged by the living conditions in the apartment building. I went to visit her and a few of the other residents just to see what was going on and the extreme state of disrepair and neglect that our elderly neighbors are stuck with indicates a complete lack of compassion. The residents are, as you heard from several of them, are rightfully outraged, as we all should be, that living conditions like this are allowed to continue, especially since several of them mentioned that up until just recently, it's been a lovely place to live and they were happy to be there. Not exactly sure what's going on, and so I don't know where exactly the buck stops in terms of who's responsible for this building financially, but I, someone is clearly not doing their job, and maybe several someones not doing their job. We do know that public money is being spent to help cover housing costs for the residents there, and so every taxpayer should demand accountability for what's going on in that building. But beyond the clear financial mismanagement and neglect that's happening in JFK Towers, it is criminally inhumane to allow and not immediately address the countless building code violations and health code violations that are rampant at JFK Towers, and you've heard just a few of them mentioned here this evening. I mean, but crumbling walls, missing ceiling, I mean, it's unimaginable that we would allow human beings to live in a building in this state. These are our human family members, and we all have a responsibility to see that justice is done by and for them. And yes, I hope that everyone will do what, whatever they can do, and even what you may not be able to do, just show up and help, because it's absolutely disgusting to allow human beings to live in the conditions they are stuck in. Thank you.
I think it's Lovey with the phone number of nine eight eight four as their last digits at forty-nine-hundred North Roxbury Street? Yes. Yes, sir, you're next, followed by Mr. Dunston, followed by Ms. Hudson, followed by Ms. Austin. If you would just state your name, sir.
John Lovely. Good evening, Mayor. Salute, and I'm glad that everybody's here to support us. Thank you for coming. I would like to say, the word inhumane is a little light word to say. I think it's really horrific in a lot of situations, and you don't know until you're there to see it firsthand, living there. A lot of people that live in the building, they feel like when you have a mind frame of you have no power to really do anything, you will be put in a situation where you feel trapped. So if y'all ever had that feeling and you have no, you feel like you in four walls, but you not, but you, your mind is trapped, so your body is gonna react that way, not moving or saying or doing anything. You'll go for anything. At the same time that you know that anything shouldn't be done to you by you paying your money to live comfortable anywhere. That's if anybody on this panel was to live there under these conditions, I guarantee you, you would not put up with it longer than these residents, as well as myself, for eight years. I've been quiet because, you know, when you have this dumb faith, I'm gonna call it dumb faith, that it's gonna get better, and you seeing a turnaround with management, like for eight years, we had like five to six managers being fired for eight, like the course of eight years and God knows how long before I got there. You understand? This is not about people who clean. This is about people who have a right under the government, under you guys, and your higher anarchy to be treated right and not be treated wrong. So, you know, who wants to live in a place where the trash is bagged up and you coming out your resident, paying your money, and you smelling what you have no business smelling? Would y'all like that to be happening in this, in this building? Would y'all still operate under them conditions? So look at it as in if you, either one of you were living there, how you would feel if you were there or this building was in the same condition that building is. So that's where the compassion should come out of all of y'all. And this ain't got nothing to do with color. This got something to do with human beings. And if you can't treat people like human beings and you want that for yourself, something in this planet is shifting a devilish way and not the way of God. So if everybody saying they love God, why in the hell would they allow a building to go down like that with people who are with God and have not a problem with how they're taking care of their responsibilities?
Thank you, Mr.
The building ain't being taken care of at the same time.
Thank you, Mr. Lovey. We appreciate your comments tonight. Mr. Dunston?
Good evening, Mr. Merrill O'Neil, Council. Good evening to the residents of Durham, and I deeply would like to apologize to the JFK residents that we have not stepped up, that this city has not stepped up fast enough to help get you out of a situation. Haven't this city learnt? Haven't this city already had enough embarrassment? Haven't you learnt about MacDougal Terrace, what the situation's going on out there? And now we have to see our elders, our seniors, the pioneers of this community, go through this atrocity? Do you know how to do the job, or you just sitting up here just looking at a job? The question is, is that, I could speak on this because a friend of mine offered me a job last year. I didn't wanna take the job, but he needed help with his company. And he said, "We need help. I need somebody that's good to come in, JD. I need somebody that's gonna be able to, you know, help out the employees." But I didn't know it was delivering medical equipment, first-time deliverin' medical equipment, and I didn't know that this job was gonna take me into the residence. It was gonna take me into these facilities. And JFK is not the only facility that needs to be checked upon. Now, I may call myself a whistleblower, then I'm gonna have the biggest whistle, I'm gonna be at the biggest beginning of the line. But how dare y'all sit on this council? And y'all supposed to be, I don't wanna say it, but a black majority city council? And we're allowing our residents to live like this situation? Now, I'm not up here for no political. I'm up here to talk based on what I seen, and I'm sorry. You have people that wants to bring their parents to this community, but after seeing JFK, you got them scared to bring their parents into this community to take care of them. Now, the conditions that they're living in, why is it that the animals at the animal shelter around the corner are living in better conditions? They got a tendency to take care of them. But our residents don't have that same concierge service? Now, if I wanted to stay at the Marriott around the corner, and I'm talking to you, Leo, businessman to businessman. If I'm gonna stay at the Marriott, and those rooms are two to three hundred dollars a night, even a suite could run you a five hundred dollars a night, and I stay there for a week and a half, that bill is almost the equivalent of me staying there in a week of their monthly rent. Now, if I gotta complain about my room, guess what they're gonna say? "Oh, we apologize, Mr. Dunston, for the inconvenience. We're gonna upgrade you. We apologize, Mr. Dunston. If this is not up to the standards, we're gonna transfer you to one of our upgraded hotels because we wanna keep your business." Why can't we treat them? Why can't we treat them as the customers? Give them the service, have checks and balances? But to me, it's a big contradiction to see people try to keep jobs at the jobs they haven't really been doing.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments this evening. Ms. Hudson, followed by Ms. Austin, followed by Mr. Woodard.
Hello, Mayor and the rest of the City Council. My name is Andrea Hudson, everybody calls me Muffin. And when I was sent the link this morning to this news article, I didn't cry, I got mad as hell. And I was like, you know what? Both my parents are deceased, both sets of my grandparents are deceased, but to see that this is how we have the elders in our community living pisses me off. And the only thing that I could do was go rent a van to make sure that I can get folks here, because their voices need to be heard. It should've been heard a long time ago, when that organization, that company got that $19 million, there should've been some accountability. And where's the accountability for DHA? For selling the building, to take their name out of it and giving $19 million to fix it, but not making sure it got done? And if DHA is responsible just as much as Millenium is, because they're the ones who sold the building that was already in deportable conditions. So whatever y'all need to do, or can possibly do, please make sure that you do it, because folks are dying and getting sick in that building. The first time I went in that building today, was today, and I was attacked by gnats in the hallway, and the heat in the hallway was over 80 degrees. This is the hallway, so if they can't get on the elevators, and they gotta go through that stairwell, they gotta be in that hallway, it is hot in there. And these are elderly folks who already have medical conditions, disabilities, and all of those things, and this is how we have them living. We have got to do something different, and it needs to be done immediately. We can't wait and see if someone's gonna change something, or if they're gonna do something different. Something has to be done now. The young lady who, and I say young lady because I don't know her age, but her tub was filled in the video, she's in the hospital right now. 99 years old and in the hospital right now because of the conditions that she's living in, in a building, that I'm sure Council and Mr. Woodard are already aware of, that there were problems in this building, and all the other buildings that are in Durham that are owned or managed by Durham Housing Authority. Isn't that why we did a $95 million housing bill, is to make sure people didn't have to live in these type of conditions? And nothing's changed, so where's the money? When you follow the money, you'll see where the problem is coming from. Follow the money, Senator, City Council, follow it. Find out what they did with that money, because they definitely did not put it into that building. Like she said, the carpet they put down, there's paint on the floor, and they're putting carpet down on top of paint, and it ain't been swept. I seen it myself today, and I was very upset. Now, if y'all want y'all parents to live over there, or something like that, then y'all take y'all parents out there and give my people something different.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor, Pro Tem, and my family. Just wanna take a moment. Would JFK Towers please stand here? Out of, thank you all. Out of 177 apartments, and I have this young man coming from Charlotte, Greensboro, once a week to help me organize. Out of 177 apartments, this is what we brought here tonight. They're scared. They ain't coming to no meeting. They don't wanna talk to me. They don't wanna talk to him. It ain't getting me put up out of my home, and I dare to say, it ain't getting me put out of my nice place. Because that's where they have to live, because there is nowhere else to go to pay the rent the way we pay our rent, and the government subsidizes that. I'm not gonna comment to y'all like everybody else have tonight. I'm gonna start out like this. Thank you for reading the proclamation of compassion. I like that. This is Compassion Month, in every definition of the word, compassion. I heard y'all mentioning here tonight, church burned down, and nobody get burnt, but y'all went over there to check it out, and see if the bricks were okay, the dirt, the cross and everything else was in place. Saturday JFK was on fire, but guess what? The alarms were turned off. By the time the residents on the third floor got down outside of the building, no fire trucks. They had to call on their phones to get the fire trucks there, because the smoke was bellowing in the hallway. Compassion. I stand here by grace, by grace. I wanna give a shout out. I wanna give a shout out to JFK elevators, they don't work and work when they want to. I'm gonna give shout outs to the alarms that were turned off. I wanna give a shout out to the smell, to the gnats, the flies, the roaches, the, what's the thing, bedbugs. I'm also shout out water. I'm talking about water. However you wanna lick a water, it ain't good. It's not good. I get $64 in food stamps a month, and that goes towards water. I got too many other ailments to drink the water in, find out I got another itch situation. But let me end like this, 12 seconds. Injustice anywhere threatens justice everywhere. Dr. Martin Luther King. Where's the compassion? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Woodard, and then I believe we have one person, Ms. Waxstaff, on the internet. Yes, sir. If you would state your name.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the Council. I wanna recognize Janetta Austin for raising this issue. When she contacted me, I went out to JFK, Mayor Pro Tem was there, he had the good sense to wear a short-sleeved, light shirt. I didn't, and we were both sweating big time in there, me a lot more than he was. And I think we would agree, we were appalled at the conditions that we saw that day. You've heard about the bathtub, the elevators, three elevators for 177 units, over 200 people living there. That's an adequate number, I understand, but not when they're not working. I subsequently returned and saw where the garbage was backing up, because the garbage chutes had been locked, not closed, locked, and the garbage was piling up. Residents were forced to take their garbage down the elevator, through the lobby, out to a dumpster. Now, I don't know about y'all's garbage, mine leaked sometimes, and we were having leaking garbage going all through the building. We saw, you heard about the mold, but the mold had gotten so bad in one of the apartments, and I've got the pictures to show you, that the resident had mushrooms growing this big on her kitchen counter. These are all things that happened. The problem is that this is not a DHA building, it is a privately owned building. So therefore, the accountability was a little tricky. But we were able to work through and find some of the accountability for this building. I think they bottomed out, though, the Friday when one of the residents came home from a stay in the hospital, and they could not, the EMT could not take her up to her apartment because not one single elevator worked. She had to be checked back into the hospital. On that Monday, I reached out to the Department of Labor, the Department of Insurance for inspections of the elevators. We found out that the elevators were inspected by the Department of Labor, but we found out that the building had not had a contract for the service of its elevators since October. Didn't have a contract. They were only called on an emergency basis, and the technician I spoke with said, he didn't think the elevators had been inspected in over a year. There has to be a policy change to be able to have these elevators inspected, not by the Department of Labor, they will do that regularly anyway, but by elevator service technicians. Because every one of these was a part that was missing, a belt, a wheelie, a wheel, that could've been easily replaced, so these folks could've had elevators. They were without elevators. The building is under construction, you all may know this, and you've heard reference to the money that has been given to that. I'm out of time, but the State Housing Inspection Agency has inspected it and will return, and will not release the funds for further renovation until some of these matters have been taken care of. So I just wanted to give y'all that update.
I think we have one more person who has raised their hand to speak on this issue tonight, is that correct? Madam Clerk, if you would unmute that person for three minutes. And if you would state your name.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, City Council members. I am Japhlin Waxstaff. I live in Durham. I am, I really don't have many words to say about this, other than, this has been a long-going situation that has been occurring in Durham as relates to our seniors. And we're not just talking to any seniors, we're talking about our seniors of low wealth and low means. JFK has been experiencing problems for a long time, and I'm so happy that Janetta Austin is speaking up, and the residents that are speaking up, because I know it's hard on residents when they're under the thumb of the government, and their housing is relying on that, to actually be brave enough to come out and stand up about these things. So a lot of times, they suffer in silence. But I'm happy that these residents have come out tonight, and I want to say, this is what happens when our public housing sector starts to turn over their properties to private sector and say, "We wash our hands of this." And that's what is happening here, and JFK is not the only one that has had problems. But we hear these stories over and over again, mold, sewage backups, elevators out, alarm systems not working, we hear it over and over again. And these people come and pour their heart out, and the unfortunate part, this council, whoever the council is, they'll make these grand speeches and probably speak tonight and do dissertations and whatnot, but they're not gonna do anything. They're not gonna do anything. And going out there, looking at the problem every week, so that you can say, "I went there," is still not gonna solve this problem. And this problem has to be taken care of. It's the crying shame when residents' temporary housing solution is Duke Emergency Room or the hospital, that's their temporary housing solution to get out of these conditions. That should not be happening. The same way that they had to remove residents for carbon monoxide, these residents should be moved into proper settings yesterday, where they can live comfortable until these problems are resolved. And that $19 million that y'all have given to them, you have to be accountable for it, you have to find out where those dollars, and take some of that money and move these residents into temporary housing, if that means putting them in some of the best hotels in Durham, it does not matter. You have to take care of our citizens, this should not be allowed. Like Mr. Johnson said, when the animal shelter has better housing than our most vulnerable population, this city has a problem. So I'm just saying, think about what you're doing up there, and I hope people don't sit up there and give big speeches tonight, 'cause the cameras are on, and do nothing later. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm going to turn now to our city manager, who will give us some insight as to where the city is in this process.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to ask Keith Chadwell to come up. I asked him to prepare a summary response regarding the Neighborhood Improvement Services Housing Code inspections process and the status of that this evening. So I would ask that Keith be allowed to provide that update.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, and members of Council. The city's Code Enforcement Office launched an inspection process on this location on the 13th of July, with two inspectors who had responded to some specific complaints. Upon seeing the conditions, these folks arranged for another four code enforcement officers to be dispatched, and through the period from the 13th through the 18th, began to do much more comprehensive inspections and analysis of the conditions in the facility. As of now, that has resulted in the opening of 15 open cases of violations to the Minimum Housing Code of the City of Durham. And the process is not completed as of yet. Excuse me. Among the most common violations that were revealed in this action, had to do with smoke detection and other life safety working devices, plumbing fixtures in disrepair, disrepair in conditions of, along common areas and within certain specific units, and inoperable air conditioning units. There has been a history, as has been stated tonight, of inoperable elevators and other sanitary related kinds of things. So what this means at this point, the owners have been issued notices of violations in concert with this. From the date that they got that notification on July 19th, they have 30 days to bring this into compliance. Within that 30-day period, they can submit a plan, a definitive plan for completing those issues, but if no accepted plan is submitted, and it is not revealed, and the fork is not completed within that 30-day period, the Code Enforcement Department will be in a position to issue a finding of fact and order to be referred to the Housing Appeals Board. And through that board, within another 30-day period, if it's not completed at that point, additional legal actions can be taken at the behest of the Housing Appeal Board. So that's the city action at this point. It is a legal process, we'll be monitoring it straight throughout. There will be additional monitorings, and we'll also have some monitoring from our Community Development Department as well. Present with us this evening virtually is a representative of the owner, of the owners of the building, Mr. Tom McNona is present with us, and if Mr. McNona is present and would like to be acknowledged at this time, we'll give space for him to do so.
Sir, Mr. McNona, this is Elaine O'Neill, Mayor of the City of Durham. Sir, we have my colleagues on the Council with us here this afternoon, as well as a number of our citizens who occupy your building in the house tonight, so I would like for you to, at this time, speak to them and to their concerns.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. My name is Tom McNona, I'm Vice President of Development for Millenia Housing. Great. My name is Tom McNona. I'm Vice President of Development for Millenia Housing Development. Alexandra Thompson, who is our District Manager on the operations side for the management company, is also monitoring the Zoom webinar. However, I'm not sure if she is unmuted or not. I can certainly speak-
If you could speak up a little bit louder. You were coming in great at the beginning, but I think you have to get closer to your mic.
Yes, ma'am. So if you can hear me okay, we hear these complaints loud and clear. We're cooperating with the city and the Neighborhood Inspection Services for the units that have not undergone the rehabilitation. Millenia acquired JFK Towers in December 2019, right before the COVID outbreak, from Global Ministries Foundations. We understood that the building was in poor condition then, and we weren't able to close on our construction financing until July of 2022, whereupon we underwent and started a major rehabilitation of all the units, spending approximately an estimated $64,000 per unit. Construction is behind schedule, and I understand everyone's feeling the frustration of this, and in part, it has to do with lack of coordination with the residents who are living in the unrehab units while we are striving to complete the complete renovation of the units on the upper floors. We have taken notes and understand the concerns of the residents, and, you know, we feel horrible, horrible about it. I know that management, while not maybe able to talk at this meeting today, is listening, and, you know, communication with the residents will be the first and foremost item. Also, I want to say, during these rehabs, we check on the big five items. We want to make sure that the residents have air conditioning. If a P-TAC unit, an old air conditioning unit in a non-rehab unit is not working, then we get portable air conditioners to those residents, especially at times this summer when, when it's so hot. If those air conditioning units, the portable ones, aren't working, then we will get two up there. We just have to stay in constant contact with the residents on that. If the management company is disregarding, you know, those requests from residents, then, you know, we will do our own internal audit and find property management staff that will. The elevators, we have a temporary immediate repair scope and change orders to tune to 240,000 that we are working on to make those elevators more reliable, while we also work into our construction budget, the necessary costs to make them permanently reliable. We've heard loud and clear these concerns, and they weren't originally part of the scope, but they are now. As far as the water, we're not familiar with pour drinking water issues, but we will look into that. What is more important to us is doing a complete jetting of all the sewer and plumbing pipes. Unfortunately, the sewer backup that affected Ms. Katie's unit, which was the bathtub that was backed up, it took us two days to resolve that and find a plumber who was capable of resolving that issue. I think when Senator Woodard was there, along with the Mayor Pro Tem, we actually were able to solve that problem while they were still on the premises. And that is leading us to complete jetting of all sewer lines that came with this building. The sewer lines are 40 years old. We're in the process of replacing where needed and making sure this doesn't happen anymore. Pest control and bug treatments, I've been verified today by management that our pest control company comes every other week to treat 30 units. They are treated, those 30 apartments, but along with that, they do target treatment as well. We will see if we need to make that every week. We will do so, and after what I've heard today, I think that will be the case. The same with bedbugs. When bedbugs are identified in units, we have the pest company come out and verify that and what treatment is needed. We work with the resident to secure their belongings and do the necessary preparations in their unit for a treatment to occur. And then that bedbug company comes out and does it, and then they'll come back and do it again as needed. You know, more concerning was the trash and the trash chutes. We have a cleaning company engaged to come. They did a deep clean of the property. I was told last week that they're supposed to come every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday to maintain clean and sanitary conditions, including the trash and trash chutes. Concerning the trash chutes, we have ordered an updated trash compactor to be brought to the property and installed. We expect that to happen in September. And in the meanwhile, management will work with the maintenance techs, as well as the cleaning company, to address the conditions that were described today. I did not witness those conditions when I was there two weeks ago. However, that doesn't mean they weren't there. I did not inspect every trash chute myself. And again, to give you an update, construction is approximately three months behind schedule. It had to do with some redesigns of ADA units, which held up the turn of a complete floor that we could have occupied with non-ADA residents. We are working, now, we have those residents moved up to the sixth floor in new units, and we are working on the fifth floor. Again, I can talk to you more about the construction side of things and the timing associated with it. However, we will have comprehensive management meetings for onsite to not only address the concerns we heard today, but to also make sure that our management staff work with the residents with empathy that is absolutely needed when you're trying to live through a substantial rehab like the one we have at JFK.
I'm sorry, Mr. McNona, and I'm sorry, I'm just going to call you Mr. M., because I'm sort of butchering your name. This is the mayor again. As my colleagues and I have sit here, sat here and watched the citizens' reactions to the words that you have stated tonight, they are looking in disbelief and seem to, they have laughed on a number of occasions at some of the things that you've stated that your company is doing and have done. They are saying that this is in disbelief. So I am wondering when the last time that, first of all, when your company has, when have they been in Durham and actually talked to the citizens and really given them an outline of what you all are planning to do? And the reason why I ask that is, when it gets to the city council stage with a private organization who owns a building, that's problematic. And I think that we are now at the point where the city is looking to you all to do some things that will immediately address these concerns. We've heard about a fire, we've heard about that happened over the weekend, we've heard about the bugs, we've heard tonight, and I'm not sure if you've heard at all, about all manner of problems that they have been dealing with over and over again, that sounds like it started before your construction phase. So can you, and I'm going to ask that you can give us some direction or some timelines as to how immediately some of these concerns are going to be addressed in terms of what you all already or have not done. These residents, they're not believing that, and they're indicating to us that that is not the current situation that they're dealing with.
Mayor O'Neill, I also have Alexandra Thompson, who I believe has raised her hand. He is a part of the day-to-day operations, and we rely on her involvement very heavily. If she can be acknowledged, she might also be able to provide you with some direct responses and timings-
Yes, please. Ms. Thompson, if you would unmute, we should be able to hear you, and you have the floor, ma'am.
Good evening. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. So Mr. McNona is correct. I am more versed and involved in the day-to-day of JFK Towers. I'm the Regional Property Director with Millenia Housing.
Ma'am, I'm going to ask you, if you would, just speak closer in your mic. We're having a little bit of problems hearing you.
Sorry about that. Is that better?
Yes, ma'am. If you would, just stay close to it.
All right. Yes, ma'am. So I am the Regional Property Director over JFK Towers. I am a native to North Carolina. I live a couple of hours away from JFK Towers, but I am there quite frequently. I have conversed with the majority of the residents. I believe there were only five JFK residents, but I have spoken to the majority of them in depth, as well as others, about their concerns. So to speak to the conditions that they brought to your attention both this evening and prior with Mr. Woodard and the Mayor Pro Tem, we have, I feel, taken full accountability, to speak to their concerns about the elevators. JFK Towers, built in 1981, does have 177 units across seven stories. We do have three elevators, which are inspected annually. That is a requirement. It's not something that we can get around. So yes, while in the middle of a substantial rehabilitation, it was noted and it was planned that these elevators would be renovated towards the end of the project. And the main reason for that is because we knew that we were hiring moving companies to move the residents throughout the property as we were renovating each floor. And due to just the wear and tear on the elevators, we just thought it would be best to take on that project towards the end. We have now met and decided that we may need to move this up sooner, just due to some recent issues. I will say that there has been an elevator contract as long as we've had the property and continues to be one, although we do have the option to revisit that, and we have looked at switching companies to a more local-based company that can respond quicker when there are issues. We have been under contract and currently remain under contract with Otis Elevator, and that is who services the elevator. In the event of a true emergency, the phones do dispatch the local fire department if there ever was to be an entrapment. And while there are three elevators, I do know that one in particular has been down more frequently than the others. I can only recall twice, and I've been over JFK Towers for a little over three years, that the, all three elevators have been down at the same time, and most recently was the longest duration of time, and that was about seven hours. And I myself, two Saturdays ago, on the day that this happened, drove down to the property to just check on our residents, number one, and also to meet the elevator tech there to see what was going on. And we were able to get those back up and running. I was constantly walking floors, checking on residents. In regards to the trash, I will say that very common in high-rises like JFK, we do have a trash chute. And while, you know, again, looking at the age of the property, the trash chute is a little more narrow than maybe a newer property that was built in the last few years. And as long as the residents use it as they should, and they don't throw large cardboard boxes or big bulky items down the trash chute, it typically will not get clogged. There have been some issues recently with the trash compactor that sits at the bottom of that trash chute, to which we had to work with several vendors to get them out to evaluate the bins that sit underneath the chute to collect the garbage to keep it from backing up. And during that time, we were able to secure a loner, but that did not arrive at the property until early last week. I do know that maintenance, along with the new cleaning company that we've contracted, have been working. Even myself and my team have gone in, in the evenings, and cleaned the trash chutes, the lobbies there surrounding those trash chutes to help push trash down. We have signed a contract and have a new trash compactor on order, once this problem, this issue was raised, and the estimated delivery time for that is about five weeks. But in the meantime, we are still, the cleaning company is there three days a week, and then, of course, our staff is there every day, working to ensure that there's no clogged trash chutes on any floor, pushing it down, reminding residents that cardboard cannot be put down with the trash chute. It has to be broken down and taken down to the dumpster, which is very common in buildings that use a trash chute. Pest control at JFK Towers has been an issue. And prior to us beginning renovations, we did have an issue with bedbugs, and one of the main reasons for that was that when a resident would move out, other residents would recycle the items left behind or throw them out to the trash, and we, you know, it came down to resident education and what you can and cannot bring back into the building. So with that being said, we try to remind residents, especially as residents are moving to the new renovated units, not to bring belongings back inside the building that have been thrown out, that they've been thrown out for a reason. I did, we do have a contract with a local, very reputable pest control company in the area. They do come in the first and third Fridays of every month, and as Tom McNona mentioned, they are contracted to treat the common areas, the office, 30 residential units. And then if anyone calls during those two weeks that they're not there a week and a half, we put them on a list, and then they will treat. If we have any resident raise a concern of bedbugs, they would inspect and confirm whether or not there are bedbugs. And if they are, they then schedule the bedbug treatment, and if the unit is occupied, a resident, they will provide a resident prep sheet of some things that the residents have to do to get ready.
Ms. Thompson, if you would suspend for a moment, ma'am, if you, let me say good evening. This is Mayor Pro Tem Middleton. Her honor has given me permission, and I appreciate you going down the list exhaustively to respond, but I did want to, in the interest of time, bring a couple of things up. First off, Mr. McNona, good evening. We've spoken before, so this is not, this is not our first opportunity to speak. We had a rather extensive conversation in your staff's office on property. Two things. Firstly, I want to do, I do want the staff to clarify the $19 million number that's being bandied about that we gave. We didn't give $19 million to them. So when the staff gets an opportunity, I'd like you to break down where that 19 comes from, the actual cash transfer, how much of it is tax incentives, how much of it is loan. So we didn't give $19 million to them. Just wanted to clarify that. Mr. McNona, Ms. Thompson, and I'm glad Senator Woodard is still here. I'm trying to reconcile our conversation that we had when I visited the site. And when I was there and the senator was there, our NIS staff were on site at the same time. I, you know, I'll just chalk it up to being quite fortuitous that the repair to Mother's Tub was done while we were there. It wasn't because we were, you were alerted that we were there, but I'll just chalk it up to good fortune that it just happened on the same day that officials were on the premises. Everything that's been said tonight, and I want you to help me with my recollection, Mr. McNona, when we spoke and the senator was present, everything that's been said tonight is not new. These are the same type of things that we said when we had you on speakerphone. And full disclosure, I want to share with the people of the city what I said to you then. This, it wasn't a gotcha visit. I didn't make it a media event, and I committed that I wasn't going to make this a media event. My belief was that we were communicating in good faith. I fully understand, and I want the folk to understand, that we know that when this building was acquired, it was in very bad shape, and that folk are literally living in the middle of not only a rehab, basically reconstruction. We understand that. But there are some things that need to be constantly maintained, even through that process. And I remember, we spoke specifically about elevators- And I remember we spoke specifically about elevators. And the senator has represented tonight that there was no service contract for the elevator, but that calls were being made on a need basis, on an emergency basis. So one, I'd like you to speak to that because my understanding is that that was something that was going to be taken care of. I do recall also asking about your washers. I think there was only one washer working for the entire building. And the explanation was that, well, because we're getting ready to rehab, rather than put in new ones now, we'll defer until everything's done. Then we'll bring the washers in. And I'm wondering if the elevators are in that same kind of category that you were just waiting until everything was done to get the elevators up to snuff. But we have elderly people there who are stuck getting upstairs and being able to navigate and go up to their apartments on very hot days, bringing groceries in. So I'd like you to help me square and reconcile the conversation we had. No media present. It wasn't a gotcha visit. But the conversation the senator and I had with you that day, where we, the litany of things that were said tonight, we talked about the same things then. So what's different? What are you just learning tonight that you did not learn in the conversation with the senator and I? And what are we going to do about the elevators? Thank you.
Are you able, you're able to still hear me correct?
I'm sorry?
I just want to make sure you can still hear me.
Yeah, if you could speak up just a little louder.
Okay. So, correct, we did have that conversation. And I've even met with Senator Woodard since then. So we do have an elevator contract, a five-year elevator contract that went into effect, we renewed, July 1st of 2022. So what we're looking at is switching to a more local company. So we do have the elevator contract. They are servicing the elevator as they're supposed to annually. And that coincides also with our annual inspections, which are occurring, and they are not behind. However, if there's ever an issue with the elevator, doors not closing, opening, things like that, we do call an emergency number, and they dispatch a technician. So what is being done with the elevators is we've had them come back out and again, look at the elevators and see, hey, did something get missed in the maintenance? Is there something that needs to be done? We also had another third-party elevator company come and look at the elevators and tell us what their assessment is of what is wrong and what is needed, and what's needed now, and then what's needed at the time of remodeling the elevators. And then with that information, we are speaking with Otis, who is our current elevator service provider, and saying, hey, have these things been done? You know, we're being told that regular service has occurred. They have regular service reports. Our annual inspections support that the annual maintenance is being done on the elevator, but we agree that there have been some issues. What we're being told by both elevator companies is that these elevators take a lot of, I don't want to say wear and tear, but they're, people are hard on the elevators. And, you know, the doors, the rollers, for example, sometimes get banged up and scuffed up more than they would at a hotel or anywhere else. So we are looking at having more frequent maintenance on the elevators. Additionally, there, in the elevator room on the roof, they determined that the room is getting overheated, especially with the hot weather we've had. So we have ordered a new HVAC system to be installed on the roof.
Ms. Thompson, I'm sorry, again, in the interest of time, we've got some folk here who need to get home. Did you say you plan on having more frequent maintenance on the elevators?
More frequent inspections, just so they can see if there's something else that needs to be done. Typically, they're inspected and serviced and maintenance once a year.
All right. I'm going to yield to the staff and back to her honor. But my office will be following up with you. There are some things that have been represented here tonight that I think warrant further conversation. So I'll follow up with you both in the next 48 hours.
And ma'am, if you all would stay on the line, our city manager, we have a correction that we like to note for the record in terms of the open cases.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As a result of the report that the city received in our Neighborhood Improvement Services Department in July and the cases that were opened, I believe Deputy City Manager Keith Chadwell, in his summary, indicated there were 15 open cases. But I wanted to provide a little bit more detail on those. It's actually 55 open cases that were a result of that, those inspections of all of those apartments. All apartments where residents allowed the inspectors' access were actually inspected, and that was in the whole building. And that, those inspections resulted in these 55 open cases and citations for, as well as some citations for general building and safety violations. So I did want the record to reflect that instead of the 15 that Keith mentioned, it is 55. And I did want Keith to briefly address the funding that has been mentioned here for the record.
And I do humbly apologize for saying 15 when I fully intended, as my notes reflect, 55 cases, 55 cases. That is correct. In terms of the finances associated with the building, I don't have before me tonight any configuration of the acquisitions or any of the transactions where I can identify a number of $19 million. If you allow me to speak speculatively, I think that may have been a number associated with the transaction that likely occurred when the initial transaction was made from the purchase from Global Ministries back in 19. Subsequent to that, as the company mentioned, there were challenges associated with getting construction financing for the renovations. Another transaction was made to a restructured limited partnership. That transaction, the value of that transaction was $35,352,000 in round numbers. The subsidy associated with that, the project was awarded to the new company of a 4% limited, 4% tax credit, federal tax credit for 404 housing. The value of that equity was about $10 million. The city of Durham, through its annual funding cycles and solicitations, awarded this project a total of $1.5 million. So the remainder of the $35 million was all from private sources, including a $17 million first mortgage.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions from members of council? All right, I'll start with Councilman Williams, followed by Councilwoman Jose Hyman, and then I'll look to my right.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We, in regards of the city being able to respond, it's a really long, drawn-out process. We'd like to, I'm sure I can, I'm sure others feel the same, would like to respond immediately, but government is what it is. To the ownership of the company, would you consider to building a place for folks to live right now? And that question is rooted in, there seems to be, you have folks living in a transition. We are, it's like you purchased a building and it wasn't ready for folks to move in yet, but you moved folks in or you allowed them to stay in. And I'm just wondering if you would consider it a habitable place right now, under your standards? And I do notice you have about 200 and, over 200 properties across the country. So I'm wondering if this is also a common practice elsewhere? Is Mr. Tom McNo-
You can call me Tom.
Tom.
Councilman, when we acquired the property in 19, we understood that it was going to undertake a lot of challenges. And we were hoping to get a quick rehab moving forward. COVID-19 certainly didn't help with those plans. However, our intention was to have a very quick rehab, 12 to 16 months, and to get people into new units sooner than later. And I believe that the process being drawn out and the process where COVID-19 involved our inability to maintain units and get into units very easily during the time of quarantining did not help, certainly. We are endeavoring now to address the issues that were raised today by the residents. And my colleague, or my property management district manager, Alexander Thompson, will address all these concerns and make sure that we can address those items. Now, by the way, Councilman, someone raised a question about the $19 million. Those were the taxes and bonds that were issued. It's construction financing. It's not a grant. It's a loan. It has to be repaid. It's all part of the 4% tax credit process that we work to raise the equity and the debt in order to effectuate the substantial rehabilitation to this property.
Thank you. And I guess I'll close with, we'd love to have a plan of action, or whatever plan you have in place. I'd love to see what that looks like. And thank you.
We have a couple more questions for you, starting with Councilwoman Jose Hyman, sir.
Good evening. I'm going to call you, Mr. Tom. And again, housing is a basic right. And I want to see the plan in terms of being able to get our residents in a temporary situation. Because I've heard all of this. We're doing this. We're doing that. It's a long list, and I actually had a headache. What I'm saying to you is that I would like to see something immediately done where they are temporarily housed someplace else to be able to fix what you need to fix.
All right. Sir, and I think we have a couple more comments on my left-hand side. Any comments on this end? Councilwoman Freeman.
Thank you. I just want to appreciate the residents being here tonight and sharing the situation, just acknowledging it's not isolated. And so I do want to make sure that we're looking at what staff is going to do to consider what it looks like to actually assess what elevators are within the city limits that have folks with disabilities. And this concern could be rose, or it could be arising in those areas as well. I think this is a highlight, and it is a situation that is occurring not in a vacuum. And so just making sure we're not waiting for another location to bring this forward. I think these folks have plowed the way, and we just need to make sure that we're covering that part of it. I would like to also just add a word of appreciation to Senator Woodard and just acknowledging that, you know, you know the ropes. And so it makes it a little bit simpler to move through. And I will say that it also makes it a big difference when a person not of color shows up for people of color in the community. And I know that it's not intentional, but it does have an impact. So I appreciate you showing up with your whiteness. I also want to appreciate Mayor Protem for taking the lead and making sure that our staff is on top of it and getting the answers to the questions. I think that there's a lot to this, and this is just the beginning. I don't think that this is going to be, I think to Councilmember Hyman's point, you know, there has to be some temporary relief because it should not be the case where the hospital is where your temporary relief occurs. And I think it's just been, this is just, this was two weeks ago that it came forward in the conversation at work session. And Ms. Austin invited us as well. And so in the two weeks, if nothing has occurred to improve, it doesn't leave me confident that anything will occur in the next two weeks. And so I would like to figure out what that looks like, and I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you.
I'm going to ask, our city manager has some other follow-up remarks as to where the city is heading next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was going to ask Mr. Chadwell to come back up again to be a little more specific about when the clock starts ticking for the major code violations that we've just discussed here. When that, we know it's in July, but just so there's a better idea of that process. You've already stated it, but restating it after the conversation has happened.
Well, the next date of incidents would be August 19th, which is the 30th day from when the notifications were made. Between now and then, I don't know this precise date, but I do know that our NIS staff, the code enforcement staff, has scheduled a follow-up meeting. It's in the process of scheduling a follow-up meeting with the owners, which I expect to occur within the next five to six days, something like that. That'll be an opportunity for an update, the opportunity for, to make a planned approach for what they're going to do in the context of this kind of enforcement action. As a part of the due diligence actions in these kinds of enforcements, a property owner is given an opportunity to cure without additional enforcement. And so that process is imminent.
I'm going to turn to our attorney who's nodding his head, Attorney Donald Tool, to kind of give some insights of what those particulars mean in terms of 30 days, the enforcement process, that date ends, and then what is required of the builder to bring itself in compliance. And if there is a longer process after that, to kind of give the perspective from the attorney's point of view.
Sure. Don O'Tool, City Attorney's Office. Sofia Hernandez, in our office, actually works on NIS with these kinds of complaints. And why I was shaking my head is I was agreeing with DCM Chadwell about the kind of due process that the city is required to give in circumstances like this. All violations, violations are issued, and then the offending party is given time to come to compliance. I know two weeks has transpired. Hopefully, Mr. Minonia is true to his word and is going to give NIS a plan of action in order to bring the property into compliance. But then if that doesn't happen, NIS would, and I'm not sure of the exact term, but they issue something. It goes to the Housing Appeals Board. That then gets heard, and certain action then gets taken after that process.
Madam Mayor, may I ask Councilor a question? Thank you, Councilor. I made a representation tonight that I would be reaching out. I don't want to violate any due process, and I don't want to make it seem like the city is giving any undue pressure. And so would it be your advice to wait until that process is exhausted, the time that they have to come into compliance with the violations is exhausted before I have any further conversations with representatives from Millennium?
I don't think so, Mayor Protem. Bottom line is, NIS has apparently notified the owner that there are at least 55 violations out there. They are in the process now, they should be in the process now, of working on a plan to correct those issues. If anyone wants to issue support or encouragement to them to correct these problems, that's not a due process violation.
Yeah, I want to encourage them. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right. So ladies and gentlemen of JFK, we are so glad that you have come down here. Somebody's, okay.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I just had a couple of questions for staff real quick. Two questions that I have is, are we also keeping residents updated with the NIS process so that, you know, when that 30 days is up, they're also alerted? So that, I know everyone here is keeping real close tabs, but I would just want that dialogue to continue with residents? And is there going to be an opportunity for residents? You know, just to be fair, I'm hearing more from residents of what's actually happening than what I'm hearing the owners saying is happening. And so is there going to be an opportunity for residents to actually compare? Like, I know that our NIS folks have said this is happening. Is there going to be another opportunity for them to weigh in? Because what I don't want is the owner saying, oh, yeah, we fixed it. And then we get residents who are like, no, actually, they didn't fix it. So what's the process around that?
Yeah, the simplest response to that is that the process of remediating these challenges must wind up in a place where the offenses are remediated or ameliorated. And as a part of that process, that means that that means that a condition that someone is living in that's atrocious has been cured. So the process up to that must, in fact, include and within that circle of communications those who are impacted by the violation.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Ms. Austin? Yes, ma'am? If you could go... If you could come to the mic, ma'am.
Mr. Tom just mentioned in this forum that when they acquired... When Millennium acquired JFK Towers, they had a 12-month plan to turn it around. And then COVID happened. So if you were going to turn it around before COVID in 12 months, isn't that same plan, the plan that you should be working on now, which has been over 12 months? So if you could have done it then, why haven't you done it now? That's the only little question I have about what we said.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. M., did you hear that question?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. If you could provide a response for me, please.
Yes, ma'am. When we wanted to do the 12-month construction process in 2019, we were planning on our plans and specs getting approved, construction pricing to come in and be the way it was forecasted. When we had to wait until 2022 for this to happen, we had a 14-month construction schedule, still very aggressive. However, what has happened over the last four months of delays associated with design changes required by the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, which weren't shared with us until after we closed on that financing in July of 2022, we had to then resubmit the ADA units back to the city for review and approval, which also required changes to the sprinkler system. This is all part of a design-build rehab that we're going through. Unfortunately, we're four months behind schedule. We're on floor six right now, when we should be on floor three. We have worked closely with the city. We have expressed our concerns, and we are constantly trying to make up time to complete this project and get folks in completed rehabilitated units that will address all the concerns identified by the NIS on their inspections. But while our construction teams are moving forward with this rehabilitation project, and they are now on floor five doing their demo and commencing the rehabilitation and complete rehabilitation of the units on floor five, we will also be working with the operations team to come together with a plan to address the 55 issues that have been shared from the Neighborhood Inspection Services with us, not only on the 19th, but some of them have filtered in past that. The 19th is not the firm date for all of them, but we will be working on all of those. And we invite Mayor Protem Middleton to continue to stay on top of us. We'd like to complete and refine our plans for addressing those 55 violations so that these units are in compliance. It is our opinion that some of those units, many of those units are habitable. However, there are issues such as the pests and the flies that we have to step up with the pest control, and we will. Ms. Thompson talked about our service contract with Otis and that we're working with the local elevator company as well to add another $250,000 of immediate repairs while we also are working into the scope additional costs to make sure they're permanent repairs. We're working on that as well. To address the comment that nothing has happened in the last two weeks, I would say that is wrong. It's not happening fast enough, but we are working behind the scenes to address these issues, to address pest control, to address the new compactor that was needed, to jet dry and get quotes, to jet out all the water pipes associated with the stacks. I think what we need to do is have better communication with the residents to address these items so that they are informed and not necessarily satisfied, but informed.
Deputy Chief Chadwell, can you tell me if the 30 days, 30 business days or 30 calendar days?
30 calendar days.
30 calendar days. So September 19 will be the first deadline? I'm sorry. No, no.
August 19.
August 19.
Completes the first...
30 days.
Yeah. Within the construct of the initial notification.
Okay.
At that point in time...
Plan should be submitted.
Yes. And if that fails, what happens? The item that Counsel was... The Counselor was referring to, if that's not met in 30 days, a finding of fact can be made and issued to the Housing Appeals Board for additional legal actions to get compliance. That does now trigger another 30-day period for something of finality to occur with respect to an opportunity for cures. After that, I'll just say more draconian options are available to us.
Now, Mr. M., what is your stance at this point on your meeting that date?
We will provide a plan as we finalize our more specific timeframe to share with the city, NIS, as well as with Mayor Protem. But please note, the ultimate goal is to substantially rehabilitate all units and relocate the population to the completed units so that we can get ourselves down to the first floor. I believe Ms. Austin is in a unit on the seventh floor that has been rehabbed, and I'm hoping that she's finding that unit satisfactory.
Okay. We will move on from answering that question. You can tell from my response, I have one last citizen that I'm going to allow her to ask a question. And then we will ask Mayor Protem if he would be willing and has been stepping into this vein to give some oversight as to directions that he will be getting ready to take to in order to make sure that the city stays on top of these things. And so I'll give him the opportunity to make some final closing remarks as to how he's going to enter into this vein to make sure that we're moving along. Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to thank everyone for listening today. But I was sitting here taking diligent notes, and Alexandra Thompson has admitted on the record that we're moving with elevators that are not properly maintained, albeit decidedly more use. When you're moving from one unit to the other, you're taking boxes, carts, et cetera. You also have construction persons going up and down for their activities for renovations. Why aren't you maintaining these elevators with more diligence than once a year? You're now putting them into decidedly more use. Also, as far as the trash chutes, please use something other than Pine-Sol and Fabuloso because that's not a biological agent. You're dealing with biological chemicals in that trash chute. I've been there 12 years. It's never been cleaned by a professional company that typically use gas masks to do so. So I'd like some address with the cleanliness of the trash chute. And please train your maintenance person not to mop the trash room and then turn around and mop the freight elevator. Woo, that was quite loud. Let's put it that way. And as for pest control, you have 170-plus units. How about treat them all? While you're moving people into renovated units, they still could have bugs. You're moving items around hallways, up elevators. There are bugs. Please, treat them before you move someone in. Treat them when they move out. Use that as common sense. Bugs do not just stay with the person. They stay in the apartment. And let's use common sense to treat these matters. But if you're putting your elevators in more service because you need construction people going through and you need people moving to accommodate your renovations, maintain them. Bring in people to look at their parts. What's wearing out proactively? Not just once a year, because they will break. You're putting them under more demand. And please use professional cleaners to clean the trash chutes that would take care of the gnats and the maggots. I thank you all.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. First off, Madam Mayor, I just want to thank you for compassionate leadership in moving this item and making room for this item tonight. Not necessarily... And I'm sure she'll forgive me for divulging this, but her honor said to me in her office, you know, we recognize that this would normally happen at a work session, this type of hearing. But the mayor thought it important enough, and I don't think there's a person up here that disagrees with her, that this was the time to do it and the place to do it. So I want to thank her for compassionate leadership, very fitting tonight, for making space for this. Absolutely. Just very quickly, I want to thank, in accordance with the mayor's statements tonight, the council has made it clear that encouragement to Millennium is not in any way violating due process in this period. So I want to let the mayor and the council know that encouragement will be going on. I will be making contact with Millennium. And of course, keeping the council apprised of every conversation, everything that's said and every representation that is made. I want to thank DCM Chadwell as well for his comments. I'll just end this way, and then we'll go to our nine o'clock break with the mayor's permission. Councilmember Hyman said something earlier, and I've heard Councilmember Johnson echo this as well, that housing, a decent place for us to sleep, a safe place for our kids to sleep and live, is a right. It shouldn't be a privilege. It's a right. I want us to lean into that. And I heard Councilmember Freeman also tonight say that this is not an isolated incident. There are a number of places that need this type of attention. For those of you watching tonight, I don't want you to feel that the council's kind of leaning in on just this one particular place and that we're oblivious to the thousands of our residents, brothers and sisters who live in these conditions. So this is not... JFK is here tonight, but we know that there's work to be done in a number of places around the city. And I want you to know that, those who are watching tonight. So I want to thank my colleagues for asking point-on questions. I want to thank Senator Woodard again as well for his leaning in on this issue and for the comments that have come, the questions and comments that have come from this day tonight and to the staff as well. Did you have anything else to say? Did you approach the...
No, sir.
All right. With that said, we'll stay in touch, and we'll stay in touch. There are a lot of people that I love and care about at JFK from years back before I had this job. And you need to know that you are heard tonight, that we take this personally as a government and as a council and as a city. And we go forward. With that said, we're going to take a... We'll be in recess for about 10 minutes till 9:11, and then we'll come back and continue with the business of the city. With the mayor's permission, we're in recess.
Hello, Alexandra.
I brought one with me. It's going to be a long one. Five public hearings. Five public hearings. Five public hearings. One is about Brightleaf.
Recording stopped.
Recording stopped.
If you will please close the vote and report out.
The final motion passes 7-0.
All right, thank you. We will now return to item number 16, which is a zoning map change for Brightleaf North. Council, Mayor Protem, I'm going to ask you if you would take over for a moment to allow me to use the facilities when I deny.
During break.
Absolutely, ma'am, with your permission. Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, I'm assuming the gavel with the mayor's permission. This is a public hearing. We will hear a report from the staff now. Item number 16, zoning map change, Brightleaf North.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neill, just left. Mayor Protem Middleton and honorable council members. Good evening, I am Brooke Roper with the Planning Department, and I'm happy to be back here with you tonight. Before I begin, staff would like to state for the record that all Planning Department hearing items have been advertised and noticed in accordance with state and local law, and affidavits of all notices are on file in the Planning Department. A request for a zoning map change has been received from Laura Holloman of McAdams for three parcels of land totaling 20.4 acres and located at 548 and 2040 Copper Leaf Parkway and 2021 US 70 Highway East. The current zoning is commercial general with a development plan, Falls Jordan District B. The applicant proposes to change this designation to commercial neighborhood with a development plan, Falls Jordan District B as well. The applicant is proposing to rezone the properties to allow up to 90 townhouse units. The properties are currently designated commercial on the future land use map. The proposed commercial neighborhood with a development plan zoning is consistent with the designated future land use. This request received a recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission on April 11, 2023, by a vote of 8 to 1. As a reminder, two motions are required for this application. The first motion is to approve the zoning ordinance. The second motion is to approve the consistency statement. Thank you. Staff and the applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Roper. Good to see you. I'm going to officially declare this public hearing open, but before we go to any comments from the applicant or the gallery, I'm going to ask if any of my honorable colleagues have any questions or comments for the staff. Seeing none, we will go now to the gallery. Mr. Gauch, representing the applicant, I believe. Sir, how much time do you anticipate needing for your presentation? Five minutes?
Sure.
All right. Put seven minutes on the clock, please, Madam Clerk.
And good evening. I will also greet the mayor who is not here, but I assume will return at some point. And Mayor Protem Middleton, members of the City Council, my name is Neil Gauch. I'm an attorney at the Morningstar Law Group at 700 West Main Street. Also with me tonight, we have Laura Holloman and Ryan Akers, both of whom are with McAdams. And we have Donna Crowder and Ann Oakley with Forestar and DHIC respectively, or maybe I did it backwards. But they are the builder and developer for this project. I want to thank staff for the presentation of this request, and I'll try not to be repetitive. This particular piece of property is part of a larger previous rezoning, I believe from around 2005. Back then, the idea was for a mixed-use area with residential office and commercial. That concept never has panned out here. In fact, most of the original rezoned area remained vacant only until recently. DHIC has acquired and is building out a dense residential community east of the site. They are building multifamily, and they are also building rental townhomes, which they call casitas. The project is just east of this site within the original rezoned area. On this project, Forestar is acting as the development arm for DHIC. What we're proposing here are for-sale townhomes. I wanted to paint that picture for you because in a vacuum, this project looks like a standalone townhome project, and technically, that is what it is, but it is part of a larger concept. As I mentioned, or as is mentioned in the staff report, the current zoning does not allow for any residential use here. Instead, this area would have to be developed for office and commercial. What we are asking for here technically is a downzoning in that the proposed project would generate less traffic than development under the current zoning. In our initial submittal for this rezoning case, we tried to maintain a mixed-use approach. The property is divided into a north and a south section by a stream, which you can see on the development plan. We designated the area closest to 70 exclusively for non-residential uses. Unfortunately, through the review process, we learned probably the number-one reason why the previous mixed-use concept never panned out here. There is so much uncertainty as to what will happen with Highway 70. NCDOT has two different plans for turning 70 into a super street, commonly referred to as the north and south options. And our understanding is that the City of Durham may also be advocating for 70 to instead become a boulevard. For years, including up to today, there has not been any resolution on which option would be implemented. And nonetheless, because of these various transportation plans, we were requested to reserve a 300-foot-wide right-of-way along our Highway 70 frontage. 300 feet is pretty wide, and it wiped out the whole non-residential area south of that stream. In fact, it goes into the stream. So the commercial component of our original submittal has been removed. That actually turned out to be maybe something like a happy accident because the placetime map designates this area for apartment and townhome, which this project, this rezoning, is consistent with the draft placetime map for this area. Finally, I just want to highlight the fact that this requested zoning map change received a strong recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission by a vote of 8 to 1. I don't have to tell you all that that doesn't happen always. But I think the various conversations we've had with nearby neighbors, the fact that this is part of a larger effort by DHIC to create housing here, and the applicant's willingness to deal with the uncertainty of Highway 70 have worked together to bring you a very sensible project. It results in less traffic, less intense uses, and better cohesion with the existing community than the current zoning would allow or otherwise require. Our team is available to answer any questions you may have, and we hope to have your support tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gauch. You've got a little bit of time in reserve. Madam Clerk, I don't have any cards for any speakers on this. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the chamber or on our virtual platform that wishes to speak on this matter? This is a public hearing. All right, seeing none, and I see none.
Pardon me, Mr. Mayor Protem. There is one hand raised in the virtual queue.
Is that, would that be Carolyn Arias? Or if you would make a.
Hi, can you hear me?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes, hi.
Yes, I can.
Do you wish to speak on this item?
Yes, please, if that's all right.
Absolutely. We're glad you're with us. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you so much. So I'll speak quickly. I'm a resident of Brightleaf at the Park, which is the community that this area would directly be next to and really right at our entrance. Just to intro our community, we're about 1,200 homes and probably one of the largest communities in Durham. We've had a ton of change happening around us here in southeast Durham, but we have lots of pride here. Probably about six to eight different neighborhoods being developed right directly neighboring to our community. But we get it, Durham's a great place to live. A lot of people want to be here. And we just want to bring to the city's attention that our neighborhood is highly engaged on this topic. We've reached out to the director of the Planning Department, met with them several times this year. We've reached out to the developer, and then also Neil Gauch here as well, the legal representative. And I want to assure the city that everyone has been lovely to collaborate with. So just wanted to note that. But I also want to highlight that, you know, our neighborhood's interests here are really, you know, outlined a lot in what the Planning Commission had recommended. So I think that they voted, you know, 8-1, which, you know, I, you know, I think, you know, that's, that's sort of seems to be like majority. But I think that there are some fine details that I'd really highlight, which include, you know, there, there is an opportunity to do something more than just pop up another 90 homes. You know, when a lot of us moved in here with mixed use being planned there, that we had hoped that even if there was something small, that there would be potential for, you know, a small, you know, retail. I mean, we know that grocery store wouldn't fit in there, but, you know, I think that there were some ideas put in, put in by the Planning Commission. Also, we just highlight that uncertainty is a word that just was brought up. And I think with Highway 70, you know, uncertainty, and then also all of these neighborhoods being moved in directly at our entrance, we already have a hard time getting out of the neighborhood. Probably the biggest complaint of people who move to our neighborhood. So just if we could ask for the, for the city to really take careful look at, you know, how we get in and out of our neighborhood and making sure that, you know, it doesn't take 20 to 30 minutes just to get out. We're also very conscious of the environmental impact, so we'd love to see more details about the greenway that's planned. We are an Audubon Society neighborhood, so also considering the impact to Lick Creek, which is the stream that they were just referring to. And then lastly, we are really appreciative of the commitments to the city that were made, you know, you know, donations to, you know, the schools, et cetera, which obviously we're very supportive of. But we'd also love to just emphasize, you know, with all of these developments moving in close to us, it would be wonderful, especially considering, you know, I think that you just mentioned sort of like this bigger plan. There's, you know, I think two to three large neighborhoods being built.
Ms. Arias, ma'am, that's your time. Ms. Arias, that's your, thank you so much for being with us this evening. That's your time. We thank you for your comments. Mr. Gauch, did you want to respond to anything? You have a couple of minutes.
Yeah, just quickly, and I will, I recognize the name immediately, someone I've spoken to personally three, two or three times, I think, about this project. And that, that's, I alluded that to earlier. I think one of the successes of this project is the level of engagement that's been done here. As far as the fact that, you know, this project would be nicer with some sort of non-residential use. We agree, we pursued it. We tried to. And ultimately, the plans for that, which is very sensible if you look at the property, it's cut in two by this stream, north and south, the south side being closest to Highway 70. It's an obvious sight for, for non-residential. But we've been asked to remove that from this development plan on account of the need for right-of-way reservation that actually ate up that whole section, which took away the, the non-residential component. I will also just state in our engagement, the idea that the section where we are building the townhomes would be used for residential was widely supported. And, and in fact, the current zoning would require that area to be office and maybe some commercial, which was not well-liked by the community to begin with. So I think what we ended up with is not 100% of what the neighborhood asked for because we are not able to implement a non-residential component on account of the right-of-way reservation. But where we're building townhomes is exactly what the community said they thought would be a great idea in this location. So, you know, I think it's a, it's a good project, and if we knew what was happening with 70, we could tell you a little bit more about what would happen at that corner, but we can't at this moment.
Mr. Gauch, thank you so much. I'll now entertain queries or comments from my colleagues. Councilmember Hyman, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Gauch. So I think the contributions to the School and Affordable Housing Fund is a plus. But can you just talk to me about, is there, and I, I just want clarity because I was reading, and I, and I've read a lot of the comments from the Planning Commission. I know they voted for it. But they also had some other comments on things that they wanted to hopefully have seen too. But the affordable housing piece, can you just speak to that?
Yes, well, I'm glad you brought that up. So the builder here, DHIC, they, okay, so recently, they had a project denied in Sanford because the council there felt their price point at under $300,000 was too low. Now, that's in Sanford. The, the, the land prices in Durham are a little different. But I will tell you that when we filed this, however long ago we filed this, they were aiming for a price point here at, at, in the low 300s. And if I had to tell you today, it looks like these will be, you know, probably in the mid 300s at this point because of, you know, just fluctuation in the market. But what they are trying to do here is build, I wouldn't call it affordable housing under Durham's definition, but definitely entry-level housing here. And they, like I said, they have a wider community here where they've got multifamily rentals. That's over on the east. And then west of that, but east of this site, is rental townhomes. So you can think of it as kind of an opportunity to move into a nicer development. And then on this, this development, which crosses the street from, what's that, Copper Leaf, that, these would be the for-sale townhomes. I mean, this is a whole program where they're trying to provide a low-price-point option for people. So, you know, I, obviously, I've been at this podium many times. I know how the City of Durham talks about affordable housing. This is not what we can call affordable housing under UDO, but this is, that's exactly what they're trying to build here, is attainable housing, you know. And so the commitment to, the monetary commitment to the Affordable Housing Fund is a genuine commitment. But I think more, I mean, I, I think this is a better project than that in the sense that they're aiming for a very low price point here, as low, as low as I've seen in Durham. And, and I'm working with them, hopefully, to help bring more projects to Durham where we can get low price points in Durham. We need that.
And I just have one more question because I think it was, and just correct me, the $21,000 to the school system, right?
That's correct.
Right. So what was the number that you calculated that in terms of the amount of students that would be, I guess, affected with you bills?
Sure. And that was, we pulled that directly from the staff report, and I don't know it off the top of my head, but I've got the staff report, so I could tell you.
It was just a big amount for the Affordable Housing Fund, and then I see the $21,000 for the school. So I was just wondering, what was the number that you used to calculate? The number of students that you use as your metrics to calculate that number?
Looks like it was 42 students.
42 students?
Yeah, that's what the staff report indicated would be the additional students created by this project.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, councilmember. Colleagues, anyone else? Councilmember Freeman, yes, ma'am.
I think, I think it's probably really a good idea to share that DHIC has been a good partner for the City of Durham on a number of affordable housing projects. And I think that this is a, a good project coming forward as a townhome, covering like the missing middle conversation that's occurred in this community. And so I think that's a little helpful around where I would be supportive of moving this forward.
Thank you, councilmember. Madam Mayor, of course.
It's kind of hard to move me once I've kind of looked at things and made up sort of kind of my mind. But I think I'm going to move tonight in support.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Colleagues, anyone else? All right, with that, I will declare this public hearing closed. The matter is now back before the council. Before we call for motions, I'm going to just query one more time. And any colleagues have any questions for staff or comments about this case? All right, colleagues, this matter requires two motions. The first motion is to adopt an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance by taking property out of the commercial general with a development plan, Falls/Jordan District B, and establishing the same as commercial neighborhood with a development plan, Falls/Jordan District B.
So moved. I was looking at the B.
I have a motion from Councilmember Freeman and a second from Councilmember Hyman. Madam Clerk, would you please open the vote? Would you please close the vote and report out?
The motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain the second motion to adopt a consistency statement as required by NCGS 160D-605.
So moved.
I was so moved. I need a second.
Second.
All right. Motion from Councilmember Hyman and the second from Councilmember Freeman, since they both said at the same time. Madam Clerk, would you please open the vote? Would you please close the vote and report out?
And the second motion passes 7-0.
Thank you very much. Item 16 is disposed. I'll now yield back to her honor. I will not be yielding back to your honor. I'll be keeping the gavel, Madam Clerk. The next item before us is a public hearing. Item number 17, Consolidated Annexation, Fletcher Crossing. And at this time, we will receive our staff report. She's back.
Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Protem Middleton, and honorable council members, good evening. Brooke Roper with the Planning Department. A request for a utility extension agreement, voluntary annexation, and initial zoning map change has been received from Dan Morse of ODG 87 LLC for one parcel of land totaling 9.47 acres and located at 707 South Mineral Springs Road. This annexation petition is for a contiguous expansion of the primary corporate limits. The current zoning is residential suburban 20 and residential rural, Falls Jordan District B. For the initial city zoning of this site, if annexation is approved, the applicant proposes to change this designation to Planned Development Residential 8.347, Falls Jordan District B. This is to allow for the construction of up to 80 townhouses. The request received a recommendation of denial from the Planning Commission on April 11, 2023, by a vote of 5 to 4. The properties are currently designated low-medium-density residential on the future land use map. The proposed PDR 8.347 zoning is inconsistent with the designated future land use. If the proposed zoning is approved, staff recommends a change to the flum to designate the property as medium-high-density residential. As a reminder, three motions are required for this application. The first is to adopt an ordinance annexing the property and entering into a utility extension agreement. The second is to approve the zoning ordinance, and the third is to approve a consistency statement. Thank you. Staff and the applicant are available for questions.
Thank you so much for that report. I'm going to declare this public hearing open. Before I go to the gallery or to the applicant, I'm going to see if my honorable colleagues have any questions or comments for staff. Seeing none, we'll hear from the representative for the applicant, Mr. Gauch. Again, how much time do you anticipate needing on this one, sir? Five minutes? Put five minutes on the clock, please, Madam Clerk.
And good evening again, Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Protem Middleton, members of the City Council. I am Neil Gauch, an attorney at the Morningstar Law Group, 700 West Main Street. For this project, we have Mr. Zach Shipman with Shipman Engineering. We also have Dan Morse, who is with the development group for this project. And again, thank you, staff, for the presentation. This is a very modest-sized piece of property at under 10 acres. On the draft placetime map, this property is designated for mixed residential neighborhood, as is the area south of this property. Now, in a mixed residential neighborhood designation, the comp plan hopes to achieve a diversity of housing. And though this project only has townhomes, it is consistent nonetheless with the placetime designation because the larger area within the, that same designation is mostly built out already as single-family homes. So this is the right housing type in the right location based on the draft comprehensive plan, draft placetime map. Moreover, the density achieved here is pretty impressive, 8.347 dwelling units per acre. This is the type of development Durham will need going forward to meet the rising demand for housing in our ever-growing city. This project received a four-five, four to five vote at the Planning Commission, so it's pretty close there. Notably, several who voted against the project indicated the lack of public transit infrastructure as an issue with this project. As you all well know, there is nothing that the private development community can do to address that issue at this time. The Transit Authority does not have plans for transit in this area and therefore will not accept transit easements on new development, even if we did proffer it. So we don't disagree that the project would be improved if there were public transit closer than about a mile away currently. But there are no routes that go through this area now, nor are there any plan to do so in the future. And that's just a fact. Aside from that, this is a really great piece of property to develop in the sense that there are very limited environmentally sensitive features here. If you've been to the property, you would know that most of it is devoid of trees. But there is actually a good swath of trees in the rear of the property, and this project commits to saving a majority of the existing trees on the site in order to meet the tree cover requirements. And that's, you know, instead of replanting, I know many of you have heard from folks in the area that tree preservation is more desirable than is replanting, and that's exactly what this project achieves. There also are no streams on this property. There are some existing wetlands, but you can see on the development plan that those areas are being preserved. And I did mention earlier that the project is under 10 acres. So, you know, in the grand scheme of things, this is a small project. It would be one phase even under the proposed multi-phase development tax amendment that is being considered right now. We have limited the impervious to no more than 60%, and we are providing additional open space over what is required by the UDO. So, you know, in my opinion, this project really is hitting on a lot of the things the city asks for. Our team is available to answer any questions you may have, and we hope to have your support tonight. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Gauch, thank you very much. I didn't receive any cards from staff for this, but I do, God bless you. I do recognize two hands raised, Madam Clerk. You're in agreement in the, on our platform. I see Pam Williams and Donna Stainback. If you would make Ms. Williams hearable, if you would. Good evening, Ms. Williams. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
I can. Good evening, and thank you for being with us. You wish to speak on this topic? See, that's why you raised your hand?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. Good to have you, good to have you with us. You have three minutes.
Okay. Good evening to all, welcome back. I'm an opponent of moving Fletcher Crossing forward.
Ms. Williams, we, I'm sorry. Could you get a little closer to your microphone? We really want to hear everything you say.
Okay. I'm an opponent of moving Fletcher Crossing forward. This is due to the existing narrow, curvy roads, less-than-10-foot lanes, a dangerous road structure with no plans for improvement in the area that already was, has burdened traffic flow and congestion. This stretch of road also does not have streetlights that illuminate down this area. The additional development, although it's small, will further hamper the ability of the already-stressed infrastructure to function. Traffic volumes presented do not include the approved development under construction now. When I talk about traffic volumes, what the latest count is. The increase in traffic volume on Mineral Springs in this area by about 4,000 due to Harlow Development and Wesley Development, which could increase the traffic on this road to 12,000 vehicles per day. The TIA for the two developments in this area mentioned that heavy volumes are experienced on the major street, Mineral Springs. The proposed 80-townhomes would be approximately 600 additional vehicle trips per day. No TIA was prepared and no cumulative impacts. How will the quick, quick overgrowth in this area affect the intersections farther from the area like Mineral Springs and Sharon and Pleasant Drive and 70, which is already functioning at a low-level service? Single-family homes, I feel like, are more appropriate in this area with larger lot sizes. There are no parks connecting sidewalks, transit in this area. As approved, this is a change in the future land use plan with no regards how Durham is approaching the needs of the existing and future residents. The closest neighborhood is Harlow with a low-density residential of four dwellings per acre. A massive part of this is the quality-of-life aspect in addition to the environmental impacts that these negatively impacted developments. We already have people being flooded due to these developments that occurred, and more water is rushing faster down the creek, down Holder Road, already. We are humans and not numbers, and so sometimes the numbers don't truly reflect the conditions. And we would like you to take the existing residents' needs into account. I do appreciate all who have come out to see what the situation and the development in southeast Durham has done. And I invite anyone else who would like to come out and take a tour of southeast Durham and the construction and hear some of the residents' concerns, to please give us a call, give me a call, Pam Andrews, and we'll set up a, a meeting with the residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for being with us tonight. Next is Donna Stainback. Ms. Stainback, can you hear me? Ms. Stainback, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Good evening. Thank you so much for being with us. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Councilmembers and Mayor O'Neill and Mayor Pro Tem Middleton. I'm Donna Stainback. I'm a lifelong member of Durham County. Okay. I'm an opponent for this particular project because of the design requirements and the environmental concerns. The proposed proffers are UDO requirements. Adding a commitment for double-row silk fence to be used during construction is a UDO and adding a commitment for use of flocculants near the discharge point. No commitment has been made to affordable housing. And the proffer for the additional students is 37 additional students, which would, due to the overcrowding in the schools, should be at $1,000 per student. Due to the existing flooding problems on Holder Road, the impervious soil percentage needs to be less than 60%, and we request a 100-year storm plan due to this flooding concern. And it hasn't been dealt with. It's still occurring. We reported on it several projects ago. Minimum design criteria is not what Durham deserves. The existing environment cannot continue with the minimum tree preservation. I heard speak about, there was pre-tree preservation, but it was not listed as above what was required, and we really need the trees because we're creating an urban heat island effect. We also request that a 30-foot buffer be provided along the property lines with a 10-foot non-disturbed buffer. Request that a 30-foot buffer along the roadway be provided with a .8 opacity. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being with us, Ms. Stainback. I don't see any other hands raised, Madam Clerk. Mr. Goesch, would you like to respond to some of the concerns from our residents?
Absolutely. So one of the concerns raised was about the narrow, curvy roads in this area, and I did just want to point out that this project will be dedicating 10 feet of additional right-of-way, I think, along both Mineral Springs and Holder. So, you know, this project would be actually widening the road in those locations, so can understand the sentiment raised. However, this project does address that. The, I think a statement was made that single-family homes would be more appropriate here, and the Harlow Point neighborhood was referred to. I actually represented the developer on the Harlow Point neighborhood, and I'll just point out that some of the same people oppose that project as well. Aside from that, the draft place type map does indicate that there should be a mix of housing types in this location. The only other housing type in that designation on the place type map that I'm aware of is single-family homes. Without, if we built this out of single-family homes, which the current zoning would allow for, I believe Saff Report indicates it could be built out for about 16 homes. First of all, that's not enough housing on a piece of property like this, in my opinion. And second of all, you'd only have one housing type here. You would not bring to fruition the vision of the place type map here. I think I can leave it at that for now and look forward to answering any questions you all may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goesch. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else that has not spoken yet on the platform or in the chamber that wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll now yield to my colleagues for questions or comments to the applicant or to the residents. Councilmember Caballero.
Thank you. Good evening. Mr. Goesch, I had a question for you.
Yes.
Thank you. Really quickly, what's going to be the price point for these townhomes?
These townhomes will likely be in the mid to upper 300s to maybe even to the low 400s.
Okay. If you were going to build one of those 16 single-family homes, what would the cost be to that? I mean, I know you don't have it, but like, right now, that would be a fairly large lot.
Oh, they would definitely be large lots. I mean, this is a 10-acre piece of property.
Okay, so we're, okay.
Yeah. They'd be large lots. I mean, I hesitate to put a price. I don't know.
But it would be more than $400,000?
Oh, certainly. Yes, certainly.
Could we maybe get into the 800,000 range with that level of land?
I would think so, yes.
That's what I've been seeing.
Yeah. I think that's accurate.
So by right, basically, we could get 16 homes.
I would say the Saff Report indicates that, we haven't run that analysis ourselves.
But it would be allowed?
Right.
So without a rezoning, what we would get in the areas, up to 16 homes, and based on price points that we've been seeing in other communities, probably an $800,000 home?
I think that's an accurate statement, yes.
Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Freeman, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. This question is for staff. I just want to know if currently there is a design feature or design process in place for a townhome or a multi-unit, single-family homes? Like, if there were a unit that were multifamily in a subdivision, is there a process for that to happen today?
Um, I'm trying to understand the question.
So if it wasn't just townhouses being built, if it were like an eight-unit cottage, is there a process for that today?
For, you're speaking specifically for the design of townhouses? That might be, okay. Sorry.
Thank you for the question. Alexander Cahill, Planning Department. Yes, there are design requirements for anything other than single-family homes. They're minimum requirements. In North Carolina, we can't regulate them for a single family, but we can for anything else. However, in the rezoning process, they are purely proffers.
And so just trying to give some context and just broaden this conversation a little bit, because it's not just this site. If there were an actual intention around multifamily cottage-style subdivisions being built, even if it weren't 16 by right, and you could actually do 144, you know, within a site, what would that, what would that process look like for a developer that would be different than what we're doing now?
That would actually require some amendments to our Unified Development Ordinance to create a by-right development that would allow that.
And that would be an act of the council, right?
Correct.
Okay. I would love to see something, I would love to have that conversation, because I think what we tend to end up in is in this, you know, duality of whether we do townhouses or by right, you know, single-family homes. But there's a missing conversation of whether or not we're actually coming up with a way in which we get both what we want, because I think folks in the community often like, I don't want to just look at townhouses that look like big boxes. They really want to see the continuation of their neighborhood character. And if that neighborhood character incorporated, you know, the same pitches, same, you know, the A-line frame, it would be very different as a cottage than the actual, than setting it up as like four to eight townhomes in a site. And so I offer that because if we're going to create the burden of traffic and the burden of environmental concerns, there should be some community benefit that comes from the development of a project. And I often vote in affirmative, just in support to try and build more housing, but it is really becoming increasingly a concern that there's no, there's no end in sight. It's not really creating a relief valve for the housing needs that we have. And so the affordable housing piece is one. You know, whether they were doing an additional pad or two or three or four, that's a proffer that they would have to make. There's no way I can push in on that. But these cases that keep coming forward, I'm going to lean in on our commissioner's comments and just realize, like, we don't have the infrastructure in place. So why carry the burden? Like, why put the burden on the residents? Why put the burden on the rest of the city to actually get the infrastructure up and running in an area where we have not planned to do so? And so I can't support it at this moment. I can't say that it's a bad project. I wouldn't say that I wouldn't support it in the future, but I do think that we do need to have a small-area planning conversation around how to get a timeline around, because it's not just this swath of land, it's the swath of land that's right below it that will need to come online as well. And when the development happens, we want it to be something that's beneficial to the rest of the city. So I thank you for that. Please.
Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, Councilmember Caballero had a follow-up.
This is actually for you, Mr. Cahill. Just out of curiosity, and I'm maybe kind of lost in the cottage thing, would we have to go through some regulatory, you know, once we get into some of these units, we get into commercial code? And so my question, I guess, would be, once we get into some of these, you know, what I would love to see, essentially, we are no longer in the residential code. And so then we have to do more fire walling, usually a sprinkler system, which then impacts the cost of housing, but I just want to make sure I'm interpreting that correctly.
Yeah, that's a great insight, Councilmember Caballero. So this is something we've talked about as approaching as part of the UDO update and rewrite. As you know, Director Young is very passionate about the architectural piece too and the design piece. And so one of the parts and elements of going through that process will be figuring out what is more appropriate for the building code, what can be done within the building code, and then what can be a design requirement within the UDO, where is legally allowed. So that will be part of that process. As you know, that contract's been approved, and so it's hopefully beginning soon.
Thank you. I look forward to that, and hopefully we will get some license for some creativity from the state.
Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, to my left, Councilmember Williams.
Sure. Councilmember Freeman hit on a lot of points that I actually agree with, just being able to be a bit more innovative. So I do look forward to that. I think we have some opportunities coming up where we can address that, and I hope we will. It's a balancing act. You know, I'm one of the leading representatives in the city on transportation. Mayor O'Neill sits at Go Triangle, Councilmember Caballero and I are at the MPO. And I can tell you from personal experience, transportation is just jacked up, and we are going to be in really big trouble, and we're going to stay in trouble until we can get the way we do transportation up to par with the speed of housing, which I don't know how possible that's going to be anytime soon. So we, I keep thinking about holistic governing. We have this demand on housing, then we have this demand on transit, and we have this, you know, the impending impacts on the environment, and all of it is happening at the same time, and very little we can control. You know, so the only thing we can do is be intentional. So when we do have an opportunity to have a little more flexibility or be more intentional about how we're doing it, I hope we take advantage of those opportunities. Specifically to you, at what point, at what threshold does a TIA should be executed?
Yeah, and Bill Judge is here as well, that it's generally, if it generates, I believe it's 150 trips, a TIA would be required.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, anyone else? I just had a couple of comments. This is, and for students of the City Council, this is probably a really interesting night. We just approved a project before this one in the Highway 70 area that was approved by the Planning Commission, and my suspicion, when you look at kind of the, all of the impacts that we talk about, would have been relevant. The only difference was DHIC. And DHIC has a lot of gravitas in our community. No pushback about, you know, impacts or environmental impacts in the same area. It's not even affordable. And note, we can, now, we're on record calling $300,000 missing middle. So that price point, we now, and I've said time and time again, to NCCU graduates who are partners, who make 90 grand apiece, which is, with an NCCU degree, is very doable, 100 grand apiece, they're, not their first job, but moving on, you know, their combined incomes, that's the range for their second home, for these two professionals who've graduated from NCCU. But passed with no issue. This second one right here, very close vote on the Planning Commission, and it's curious how some of now those things come back in this particular case. Listening to some of the comments from our residents as well tonight and passing, and catch this. All of the environmental impacts and concerns go away if we build single-family houses with big lots? So all of the litany of concerns are addressed if we just turn them into big, single-family homes? I don't understand that. On the other hand, you know, the environmental, if we just add a more affordable housing, so the affordable housing, and when we have had projects that had affordable housing in it, and by the way, we've had plenty of developments that had both single-family and townhomes routinely, and there've been plenty of single-family and townhome developments that have come before us, that included affordable housing, that included double-silk fencing, that included flocculants, that, you know, folks still voted down. We still voted down. So I just wanted to catch that, that these projects are very, very similar. It's curious also to read the Planning Commission comments. The first one, you know, passed. The second one was very close, four to five. Lack of transportation, which is out of our purview. And, you know, when our experts say, you know, well, we do have the capacity, I think it's important to remember that, and I'm a layperson in this stuff. I judge infrastructure by my comfort. If I'm in a traffic jam or I'm waiting at a light too long, to me, that's an infrastructure problem. When it's really, I'm at the peak of the travel, it doesn't mean that that road can't handle the cars, and because I'm stuck at a traffic light, does not mean that scientifically we don't have the infrastructure. It doesn't mean that I'm frustrated, I want to get to where I want to get to quickly. But if our experts say we've got 20 more years on that road before we have to ratchet up again, you know, each individual resident will have to come to their own conclusion about that. But oftentimes, we conflate our comfort with actual infrastructure issues, as scientists would look at and professionals would look at infrastructure. So I'm supporting this project like I supported the one before it in the same area. It was a very close vote. You know, one excused absence, the vote could have gone another way in the Planning Commission comments. But I'm reading the Planning Commission comments, and I'm seeing, starting, I try and develop patterns and try to understand where folk are coming from, but it's challenging to reconcile the first case and the second case in generally the same area, all things considered. And I don't see how single-family homes make, all of a sudden make, you know, environmental or infrastructure concerns go away. That's a values decision. Single-family home, large lots, does not, how does that dismiss all the other things you said? It doesn't. It's a value decision. And I would just, you know, as I close, remind us that we've done plenty of developments that have both single-family and townhomes, and, you know, double-silk fencing, things that people have recommended, and affordable housing that folk have still pushed back against. So I just want to just put that in clear relief, because it was on clear relief tonight here at this meeting. Well, that's all I have to say on it. I'll be supporting this project. Colleagues, anyone else? Madam Mayor.
I just, I would just say that people have a right to disagree, and so people have to vote their conscience. And I don't know if it's up for us to interpret how an individual thinks and justifies how they come to their votes. And so I just will push back at them and say that people may not see them as the same, because they are not the same. They are two totally different projects, and so you can have two differing opinions, as we've seen with the Planning Commission on both votes. So I don't know that I put a lot of stock in trying to figure out why you all vote the way you do and I vote the way I do. I'm accountable for my vote to the citizens who elected me, and I don't try to weigh into what and how you all are voting. We vote together on some things, and we don't vote together on others. That's called democracy. That's how it lives.
Absolutely, Madam Mayor. Thank you, ma'am. And please accept my apologies if my comments seem to come off as suggesting that people don't have, you know, their opinions or their votes. I've actually been chided for, we've been publicly chided for our votes on this dais and other places many times as a demonstration of our values. Look at how they vote. And so that's actually happened, but I didn't, I in no way wanted to suggest that people, you know, shouldn't vote the way they should. I was just merely expressing my opinion on the matter. With that, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed. The matter is back before the council. Colleagues, I'll query one more time if there are any questions or comments for the staff. With that, this, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you for recognizing me, Mayor Pro Tem. So I just, we wanted to make sure we clarified one point of information before y'all took your vote. The phased grading and tree preservation amendment will be coming to y'all on September 5th meeting, and in that UDO amendment, it actually defines mass grading as anything over four acres for residential. So I just want to make sure you have that information. I think Mr. Goesch thought it was 20 acres, but it would be four acres.
Thank you very much. Duly noted. That's an important distinction. All right, colleagues, this requires two motions. Motion number one is to adopt an ordinance annexing Fletcher Crossing into the city.
Point of order.
Point of order.
I just wanted to check in with Mr. Goesch and see if he wanted to address that tree preservation request that was made, because I know he stated it was at 20, and staff just corrected that it will be at four.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Goesch, you want to respond?
Yeah, thank you. I'll just maybe ask a question. So the, as I understand it, in the draft tax amendment, the largest phase before you have to do additional tree save is 35 acres. Mass grading still is at four acres, as it is now, as I understand it, but for a phased development, this development at under 10 acres would still be one phase under the new amendment. under the new amendment. Is that?
That's correct. So to trigger the tree preservation, it'd be 35, 20 and 35 acre threshold.
Sorry if I misspoke earlier, but that's what I meant. It's going to be one phase under the current UDO, and under that amendment, it would be one phase, this project.
Thank you for that, both. Motion number one is to adopt an ordinance annexing Fletcher Crossing into the city of Durham effective September 30th, 2023, and to authorize the city manager to enter into a utility extension agreement with ODG 87 LLC.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Johnson, and the second from Councilmember Caballero. Madam Clerk, would you please open the vote? Please close the vote and report out.
The motion passes four to three with Mayor O'Neill and Councilmembers Freeman and Halsey-Hymon voting no.
Thank you. Motion number two, to adopt an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance by taking property out of the residential suburban 20 and residential rural Falls/Jordan District B and establishing the same as planned development residential 8.347 Falls/Jordan District B city jurisdiction.
So moved.
Second.
I hear a motion from Councilmember Johnson, and the second from Councilmember Caballero. Madam Clerk, would you please open the vote? Please close the vote and report out.
And again, the motion passes four to three with Mayor O'Neill and Councilmembers Freeman and Halsey-Hymon voting no.
Thank you. And finally, motion number three, to adopt a consistency statement as required by NCGS 160D-605. So moved.
Second.
I hear a motion from Councilmember Williams, and the second from Councilmember Johnson. Madam Clerk, would you please open the vote? Would you please close the vote and report out?
The consistency statement passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much. This matter is disposed of. Madam Mayor, I'll yield back, ma'am.
Thank you. We turn back, thank you, Mayor Protem. We turn now to item number 18, which is a zoning map change Fairhaven Walk. And this is a public hearing for a zoning case. And we will now hear from Ms. Roper.
Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Protem Middleton, and Honorable Councilmembers, good evening. Brooke Roper, City County Planning Department. A request for a zoning map change has been received from Pamela Porter of TMLTA Associates for six parcels of land totaling 8.19 acres and located at 313 Old Oxford Road and 3411, 3415, 3417, 3419, and 3421 Daniel Blaine. The current zoning is residential suburban 8 and residential suburban 20 Falls/Jordan District B. The applicant proposes to change this designation to planned development residential 23.445 Falls/Jordan District B. The applicant is proposing to rezone the properties to facilitate the construction of up to 192 multifamily dwelling units and 6,000 square feet of daycare space with 100% of the units designated as affordable. The properties are currently designated office on the future land use map. The proposed planned development residential 23.445 zoning is inconsistent with the designated future land use. If the proposed zoning is approved, staff recommends a change to the flum to designate the property as high-density residential. This request received a recommendation of approval from Planning Commission on June 13th, 2023 by a vote of 12 to 0. As a reminder, two motions are required for this application. The first motion is to approve the zoning ordinance, and the second motion is to approve the consistency statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roper. You have heard the report from staff, and I am now going to declare this public hearing open. First, are there any questions for staff or members of the council? All right, all right. We will now prepare, I have a total of four cards. I think they are all proponents, Ms. Pam Porter, who is the developer designer. We have Mr. Justin Mitchell, who's here as a proponent as well. And we also have Mr. Patrick Barbeau, who is the engineer. How much time do you think we need? I think you're the only three that'll sign unless we have anybody else on the internet. Nobody else on the internet? All right.
Five minutes should be fine. Thank you.
You may proceed.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council, Pam Porter with TMTLA Associates, 5011 South Park Drive in Durham. With me tonight is Justin Mitchell with Commonwealth Development Corporation of America, and Patrick Barbeau with Timmins Group. Thank you, Brooke, for the presentation. I'll just be brief in my comments. So as Brooke mentioned, we are requesting a rezoning to PDR of 23.445 to develop Fairhaven Walk, which is a 100% affordable apartment community. It will have a maximum of 192 units and is located in the Bragtown neighborhood of Durham. This gave us the opportunity to have meaningful engagement with the Bragtown Community Association and work with them to find out how best to fit this project, how best this project could support their community. Many of the commitments we've made stemmed from that engagement. And I would like to mention, too, that Fairhaven Walk was one of the four initial recipients of the gap funding. We've also been working with the Durham Housing Authority and Durham Head Start. And after several Zoom calls, emails, and one in-person tour of Bragtown, we were able to come up with a list of items that we could help to address the needs of the community. As Brooke mentioned, this is 100% affordable, and 30% of the units will be 30% AMI or lower. We did have a commitment to the, to 25% of 30% AMI, but after talking with Bragtown, we were able to increase that to 30% AMI. And the remaining units will be an average of 60% AMI. And we're hoping that through some housing vouchers with DHA, we can increase the proffer of the 30% units. We don't know that at that time. We're working through that right now. This project is also committing to a space for Head Start, an early childhood education program. The developer and director of Head Start have been in communication about an MOU for this, although it has not been finalized yet. We're also committing to a covered bus shelter for the existing bus stop located along the northern frontage of Old Oxford Road. And we are providing off-site sidewalk to fill in the gap from our project down to the south and to the west to kind of fill in the corner, which will help to facilitate, in addition to some crosswalks, folks that live here and in the Bragtown community can walk to the Food Lion Shopping Center, which is something that we knew was important to them and we wanted to commit to. Crosswalks pending approval by DOT and, you know, and transportation, but we're hoping that we can get those crosswalks in. And we did receive unanimous approval at Planning Commission, and we hope to have your support tonight. And myself and the rest of the team are here for any questions you may have, and I'll have Justin come up, and he'll say a few words about Commonwealth.
Good evening, Justin Mitchell with Commonwealth Development. I'm the development project manager for this. Commonwealth Development, as I think you've seen probably a number of times, is we are a national developer of affordable housing. And we are looking to develop this site as a 4% tax credit project, in which an application was submitted in 2022. Something that was unique about this project was, a lot of times when we look to bring new affordable housing into a neighborhood, we're met with considerable opposition. We don't want rentals in our neighborhood, we don't want multifamily, we don't want affordable housing. Those people, you know, those are the types of things that we hear. And the response from the Bragtown neighborhood was, I guess, a YIMBY plus. It was, yes, we want you here, and we want as many of the 30% AMI units as possible in recognition of Durham area rents in general are relatively high. And if we utilized a standard unit mix for a Li-Tech project, it would price out a lot of the people who currently live in the Bragtown neighborhood. And so what we've done is looked at various avenues in which, how can we meet that goal of how many are the maximum number of 30% AMI households? And as Pam stated, if the partnership, which is currently in discussion with the Housing Authority, comes to fruition, it will be, 34% of our units would be at 30% AMI level. But the nice thing about that is that those units would all have vouchers. And so while a typical family at a 30%, AMI household would have to have about $30,000 in income for a family of four, the voucher means that you could essentially have zero income, because you pay 30% of your rent and the voucher would pay the difference. So it really creates an opportunity for people who live in that neighborhood, who maybe have the greatest need to be able to afford and live in this development, which is, you know, going to be a green-certified, sustainable development with, you know, playground and different amenities. Two playgrounds, because there's childcare playground and our site playground. But one of the great things about this process was Donna and Vanessa from the neighborhood invited myself and the lead developer and the architect, and Pam joined us, gave us a tour, and then we went out to eat and kind of had this roll-up-your-sleeves session of, what can we do to make this be one of the greatest contributors to the neighborhood? And that's where she's like, we need childcare, we need childcare that's able, the residents are able to walk to, that they feel that it's an easy avenue to get their kids there safe, and we need those 30% units. And so that's where the, let's, how can we connect our site to the existing sidewalk? There's sidewalk by our site, but it's splintered, and there's trails, and people are actively walking everywhere in that neighborhood. And then to improve bus access, my uncle and I drove around the site neighborhood this evening before the meeting, and, I mean, every bus stop had like two to five people. I mean, it's a heavy used transit area, and so to be able to improve that infrastructure as well, a lot of things have really come together to make this an exciting project,
I think we're all smiling. Councilwoman Freeman, Councilwoman, we'll just go straight down the line. I think all of us have just a happy.
Thank you. I appreciate this presentation, and it's almost like magical, it's so weird, that I asked for development with a daycare center about a year ago or so, and here it is. I will say that this is the product of Bragtown folks, you know, really rolling their sleeves up and pushing you guys around it. But I appreciate you coming into the community and trying to figure out what's most beneficial to us as residents who live here, rather than the other way around of trying to think about what other people want to come here. And so that's very helpful. I did want to say that it's really useful to put it in terms of trails. I've never thought about it that way, but, you know, trails, because they're out of necessity, is very different from the trails people use to kind of exercise or have daily activities. And so figuring out what that kind of trails of necessity are in that area are important. And so I really would like to see how that conversation moves forward, and I'm not sure who I follow up with on it, but I know that that corridor there, those, it's kind of like the beaten paths that are in place, if there's ways to use that, that is incredible for this project. And so I just appreciate it and say thank you. I would say that this is, this is the type of project that meets the burden of infrastructure, like in the previous project, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Couple weeks ago when we met, I said, this is a project that'll make council really happy, and I really couldn't see anything where there would be any, anything but joy. So thank you for an excellent project. Thank you for working with the neighbors. I'm glad that affordable housing, I'm going to say it, I said that this was possible because of voters in 2019 passing an Affordable Housing law, because that gap financing came from the city. So I think it's important to see where that, you know, we often get asked as council members, well, where did that money go? Here's an example of what that, where that money went, and it's important. So thank you, and I will be very happily voting yes.
Thank you, colleagues. I want to associate myself with everything my colleagues have said. Best $3 million I ever spent. Only time I've ever spent $3 million. Congratulations. I think this is a wonderful project. 4% Li-Techs are, grants are easier to get than the 9%, obviously, but still takes some leaning in, so we're very appreciative. I did want to ask, where is your company headquartered?
Middleton, Wisconsin.
Where?
Middleton, Wisconsin. So just right outside of Madison, Wisconsin.
It's a lovely community. I remember visiting Middleton, Wisconsin some years ago, working on a presidential campaign years ago in the previous form of life. I think their model now is a city, a great neighbor city, the city of great neighbors or something like that, but, you know, you just worked there.
I worked there every other week. I'm actually closer to Green Bay up in Oshkosh, Wisconsin, but.
Well, please tell all my cousins in Middleton, Wisconsin, I said hello. Thank you.
Looking to my left, our right looks like we're going to go down the road.
I'm just going to say thank you to my colleagues. At that point, I wasn't on City Council, but you had a vision, so thank you, thank you, thank you. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, not that much to add. This is a great project. Let's do it 50 more times. Thank you.
I've said it's a balancing act, holistic governing, you're balancing it out. Thank you.
You made us all happy tonight. I know you reached out to me, but there was really no need for me to answer once I read it. For us to meet, Durham thanks you, Bragtown thanks you, it's going to be our honor, I'm sure, to carry this vote. All right, so let's get to it, everybody. We're going to close this public hearing, unless there are some other people to be heard tonight. Looking to our clerk. All right, so this public hearing is now closed, and this matter is back before the council. We have two motions for our consideration this evening. The first is to adopt an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance by taking property out of the residential suburban 8 and residential suburban 20 Falls/Jordan District B and establishing the same as planned development residential 23.445 Falls/Jordan District B.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Councilwoman Halsey-Hymon. I heard Councilwoman Williams speaking in the background, too. Halsey-Hymon, and then Councilwoman Freeman. All right, okay. Madam Clerk, if you will open the vote. If you will close the vote and report out.
The motion passes seven to zero.
The second motion is to adopt a consistency statement as required by NCGS 160D-605.
So moved.
Second.
The motion was made by Councilwoman Williams, seconded by Councilwoman, Councilwoman Halsey-Hymon. Madam Clerk, if you will open the vote. If you will close the vote and report out.
The second motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you so much. Thank you all for tonight. We now turn to item number 19. Going to get some cheers on that one. Zoning map change 602 North Hoover Road. And Ms. Roper will be back with us. This is a public hearing in a zoning case, and we will now receive our staff report from Ms. Roper.
Good evening again, Brooke Roper, City County Planning. A request for a zoning map change has been received from Christian Santiago of Pinham Development for one parcel of land totaling 1.217 acres and located at 602 North Hoover Road. The current zoning is residential suburban 20 Falls/Jordan District B. The applicant proposes to change this designation to industrial light with a textual development plan, Falls/Jordan District B, to allow for light industrial uses in the future. The properties are currently designated industrial on the future land use map. The proposed IL zoning is consistent with the designated future land use. This request received a recommendation of approval from Planning Commission on March 14th, 2023 by a vote of 13 to 0. As a reminder, two motions are required for this application. The first motion is to approve the zoning ordinance. The second is, motion is to approve the consistency statement. Thank you. Staff are available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Roper, for that staff report. I am now going to declare this public hearing open. First, are there any questions for staff from council? No. Okay. Councilwoman Freeman.
Just a thought that I feel like I should share and get it off my plate. Is there any connection between, I guess, developer, development cases like this that come forward in economic development in our workforce and economic development department?
So I do not work directly with that department when these cases come in. I don't know if we, I'm going to tap on Alexander Cahill again.
Hey. Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. So.
So we do have some collaboration with Office of Economic and Workforce Development outside the purview of zonings and annexations. However, we don't collaborate in this space. I'm not sure what the legal realm is for that, but I see Attorney O'Toole is my king, so.
I had no comment.
If it may be just helpful, Alexander, if we could set up some time to have a conversation, if I could just ask you to help me with that, that would be helpful.
Yeah, we can talk to Director Young and get that set up.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other questions for staff from the council? All right, I actually don't have any cards at all, but I am sure we have an applicant. If you will come forth and state your name, sir. And I don't, I'll check with our clerk briefly to see if we have anyone signed up to speak on this agenda item this evening. All righty. We will hear from you, sir, if you will state your name, and take about five minutes if you'd like.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council. Might be hot outside, but I'm cold in here. As staff did a very good job just summarizing everything up, there aren't much to talk about apart from that, but my name is Christian Santiago from Pinham Development located at 212 Angus Road here in Durham, on behalf of the property owner. 602 North Hoover Road is a 1.2-acre parcel, currently zoned residential suburban 20, and we were seeking to change it to industrial light. There was no TIA required for this rezoning. Planning Commission unanimously voted 13-0 in favor of this rezoning. A gentleman spoke at Planning Commission and expressed concerns about some of the permitted uses in the new zoning designation. We amended this application to have a textual development plan restricting adult establishments and bars and nightclubs. I actually spoke to that gentleman here earlier tonight, and based on that conversation, his concerns seem to be eased, and so I hope that adding those restrictions adjusts any reservations you may have on this application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for, all right, Mayor Protem?
Mr. Santiago, if you would, thank you, I have a quick question, I'm sorry. The, what do you plan on doing? What is going to go there, do you know?
There is no plan at the moment. The property owner just got the land appraised, he has no intentions for developing it, but he got it appraised, and the appraiser suggested that it would be worth more as industrial, and looking at the future land use map, they determined that was the best use anyways for it.
All right. Just out of curiosity, the list of prohibitions, they're usually a little longer when they come for some, but maybe there's some shorthand here. So under adult establishment, does that include internet cafes or gambling spots?
Yes, I email planning departments, and they confirm that those type of establishments are covered in that, even breweries are covered in the bars, for example, so, yeah, it really just restricts those types of uses. So really, if that were to be developed eventually, really the biggest thing or the best use it seems to be at the moment would be a warehouse or a small office building.
Thank you so much, I appreciate you being here. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Any other questions? All right, I will now declare the public hearing to be closed, and this matter is now back before our council. We have two motions for our consideration this evening. The first motion is to adopt an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance by taking property out of the, am I reading the right one? Let me make sure, I am sorry. So, no, I'm sleeping, sorry. By taking property out of the residential suburban-20, Falls-Jordan District B, and establishing the same-as-industrial light with the textual development plan, Falls-Jordan District B.
For move?
It's been moved by Councilwoman Williams, and seconded by Councilwoman Hosea Hyman. Madam Clerk, if you will open the vote. If you will close the vote and report out.
The motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. The second motion for our consideration is to adopt a consistency statement as required by NCGS 160D-605.
Second.
And moved by Councilwoman Williams, seconded by Councilwoman Hosea Hyman. Madam Clerk, if you will open the vote. If you will close the vote and report out.
The second motion passes 7-0.
Thank you so much. Mayor Protem, I'm losing my voice, I'll let you handle the last one for me.
Yes, ma'am, of course. Madam Clerk, assuming the gavel. Item number 20 is a consolidated annexation, 631 and 633 Clayton Road. This is a public hearing, we will now receive report from our staff.
Evening, Brooke Roper, City-County Planning Department. A request for utility extension agreement, voluntary annexation, and initial zoning map change has been received from Pete Guido of Windmore 208 LLC for two parcels of land totaling 7.706 acres and located at 631 and 633 Clayton Road. This annexation petition is for a contiguous expansion of the primary corporate limits. The current zoning is residential suburban 20, Falls-Jordan District B. The applicant proposes to change this designation to residential suburban multifamily with the development plan, Falls-Jordan District B. The applicant is proposing to annex and rezone the properties to facilitate the construction of up to 61 townhouses, of which nine will be income restricted to households earning no more than 80% of the area median income. The properties are currently designated low-density residential on the future land use map. The proposed RSMD zoning is inconsistent with the designated future land use. If the proposed zoning is approved, staff recommends a change to the flum to designate the property as low-medium-density residential. This request received a recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission on April 11th, 2023, by a vote of 6 to 2. As a reminder, three motions are required for this application. The first is to adopt an ordinance annexing the property and entering into a utility extension agreement. The second is to approve the zoning ordinance, and the third is to approve a consistency statement. Thank you, and staff are available for questions.
Thank you so much for that report. I'm going to declare this public hearing open, but before I go to the gallery or the applicant, I'm going to ask if any of my honorable colleagues have any questions or comments for the staff. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. Just a quick question, following up from Commissioner Vice Chair Cameron's comments about the DOT, and I'm not sure if we're keeping track or not, but I'm not, is there a way to connect those residents to the DOT staff, so that they're making sure that they're letting them know the concerns as opposed to us being in a flow-through?
Really, we do have DOT staff, we share the rezoning applications and annexations with DOT staff for comment, so they do get to see and comment on each case.
And is there any way for that information to come, like, I guess, a feedback loop so that the resident knows that they're going to follow up?
Right. I'm not quite sure on that point, but that's definitely something that we can consider in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else? All right, then, I have the attorney for the applicant identified as Adam Stallings. Counselor, good evening. How much time do you anticipate needing for your presentation?
Five minutes.
Five minutes, we'll put five minutes on the clock, please, Madam Clerk. Thank you.
Hey, good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, honorable council members. My name's Adam Stallings, I'm an attorney at Martin &amp; Gifford at 301 North Main Street in Winston-Salem, North Carolina. I've known my client for a long time. Peter Jiddo is the face of the applicant, the developer. We've got Michael Joseph, who's from Veteran Engineering Associates, which is an engineering company here in Durham. They're here, happy to answer any questions you all have. We're very thankful to the staff. The reason being, when we started this plan to develop this area, we had, I guess, a bit of a short-sighted approach. We were going to go from RS 20 to RS 10, hoping we could get maybe 30 units, and it was the staff's recommendation, said, if you go with this, and if you're willing to commit to doing some affordable housing, you know, we can do a better project for what Durham wants. And we feel like that's a win-win for the city and for my client and for us, and so we were very thankful for them helping us through this process and getting us where we are today. We think that when you look at this area, you know, it's an annexation case, but it seems kind of almost like a sensible infill project, you know, we're just over 7.5 acres, so it's relatively small for what you all deal with, but we think we can have an impact here that's good. We've got some single-family to the west, we've got the Southern High School across the street, and it seems like it would be a great place for some students and their families to move in. It would have been great, you know, when I was back in high school and being transported from Cary all the way to southeast Raleigh, you know, by bus. That didn't make sense then, but maybe, maybe things are getting better. A couple other points, you know, just things that we've heard tonight, you know, we've committed to making sure that we would uphold, you all have done a lot to increase the erosion control standards, floculents, things like that, to help keep the waterways clean. We committed to that, even though it's not part of the UDO yet. We've also committed to ensuring that we can tie in with some other development that you all are doing and increasing accessibility through sidewalks. One thing I wanted to note, you'll see in one of the proffers we made, that we would try to get it so that we could go to across 629 Crawford, which is to the south. We reached out to Ms. Wiggins, she did not want us to come on her property and build that, so you'll see that that was one of the conditional proffers we made, and unfortunately at this point, we've not been given permission in case anyone noticed that. But in general, we think this is exactly what this area needs, and we humbly ask for your support tonight, and thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you so much, Mr. Stallings. You identified Mr. Joseph as part of your team, but he did fill out a card. Sir, did you wish to speak?
Only if you all have questions, and we're happy to fill one out if you'd like us to.
Very well, thank you so much. I don't have any cards from anyone wishing to speak, and so this is a public hearing. Does anyone in the gallery or on our virtual platform who wishes to be heard on this matter, would you plead? You wish to be heard, ma'am? Thank you so much for being with us. If you come to the podium and just give us your name, you'll have three minutes, and afterwards, if I could trouble you to fill out a card afterwards, thank you so much, and thank you for being with us.
Good evening, my name is Tanisha Wiggins, I'm a co-owner at 629 Clayton Road. We've been longtime residents at 629 Clayton Road. Our parents established that home in the 70s, and we've seen a lot of change, of course, in the area, and we are, we understand growth, we understand that growth is going to happen. We would just like to see it happen with respect to the residents that are currently there, and that have been long-term residents there. We oppose the building of those townhomes, it just doesn't fit the neighborhood. And that's the concern. Like, I understand growth, I understand, you know, I think really under the ruse of affordable housing, to hear that, you know, staff has assisted with that and offered, dangled that out there, it's concerning. As a long-term resident of Durham, it's very concerning, and I just wanted to be on record that I'm disappointed. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, and you are on record. Thank you so much for being with us tonight. If you would see our clerk, thank you so much. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else in the chamber on our virtual platform who wishes to be heard on this matter? This is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, do you see anyone on our, I'm sorry, you're multitasking. Anyone on our platform? I see no one. All right, Mr. Counsel Stallings, did you want to respond to anything you heard?
Just briefly, thank you. You know, we certainly understand that not everyone's going to be a fan of these developments, but we do think that based on your outlook and your decisions to move forward in this way, it fits with that plan and that vision, and so while we understand that people don't want to see things change, and I understand that better than a lot, you know, this seems to be a good area where you could start to phase into these changes. You know, you look at, to the west, and you've got the single-family homes, but this does bring, you know, it's not a ruse, there will be affordable housing, and these will be more like the entry level, you know, things that we're talking about as opposed to the $800,000 single-family homes that, you know, seem to be the options these days when you go with the more traditional setup. So again, we really do thank staff for doing this, and we think that it just fits the vision of this council. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm going to now seek if any of my colleagues have any questions or comments for the applicant or any of the, as Councilmember Freeman yield to you.
Thank you, and I may be missing something, I'm just trying to figure out, I guess, what, when you say that it's going to kind of, it could phase in, is, where their property is, is there a buffer, and is there like anyone, have you been able to identify whether or not there'll be like a third-story, second-story view into their house? Like, how much detail have you been able to get to?
Great questions, Councilmember Freeman. No, I mean, there's a large buffer, and you'll see that one of the proffers is that we've gone beyond the minimum requirement, you know, we're going to try to save as many trees as we possibly can there. If you look at the plans closely, we've got a greater opacity. We do not know the exact size or elevation of these properties, though we do feel like, you know, because it's the edge of that other development, you know, it's the perfect place, it's not right in the middle, it's not surrounded by a single-family homes, it's on the edge, right up against the school across the street.
And like I said, I think I may be missing something, because I'm not seeing like a map with any like development envelope on it. Is there, I'm sorry, I'm asking staff if there's something missing from our Granicus file. No, the, yeah.
Apologies, it looks like it's not on iLegislate, it was entered into Onbase, but that was a staff error.
Yeah, and I think that might be part of the issue, is that this has not publicly been made available, so I'm, well, it may be on the website, I may be missing it, but I think it would be helpful if folks could see exactly how the building envelope will sit on that piece of property, because it's a small triangle, and then if their property's right there, my main concern would be whether you're looking in my bedroom, like, if I happen to open a window, am I looking at someone directly? Like, they're, they're just pieces of that, that kind of matter, and so I can appreciate the comments that were shared, and I would hope that staff could get that.
And I'm certainly happy to have Mr. Joseph come up and speak to that.
Hi, I'm Michael Joseph with Veteran Engineering Associates. To your point, I believe on that property line, there's a 30-foot buffer, and I'm working from memory, but I want to say it's 60% opacity, right? I believe that the, that Mrs. Wiggins' house is closer to the road, and so there's, they're not going to line up. The proposed road that this development is proposing is sort of the middle of the site. It's a shame you don't have the exhibit. Yeah.
That's helpful. I think staff will get us that. I don't feel comfortable voting on this, I will tell you that. I was just going to vote no, but I just figured, I didn't realize it was just missing.
Yeah, we can definitely provide you with the development plan attachment. I'm sorry for the oversight.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Mistakes happen, I'm not trying to, like, it's nothing that anyone should be upset about, it's just, just missing.
Yes, ma'am. Weefen? Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, anyone else? Questions or comments? I agree with the Planning Commission on this one, I think it's a good project, I'm going to vote for this one. I appreciate Councilmember Freeman's questions about line of sight, and I will say, I, my neighbors, if they leave their blinds open, I can look out my window and look into their, I've lived in plenty of apartments where if you don't have your blinds closed, you can, you can see in, so I don't know, well, I appreciate the, bringing it up, I don't, that's not really operational for me. I think it's a good project, I'm going to be supporting it, per the Planning Commission's good comments on this and good vote, I think. Colleagues? With that, I'm going to declare this public hearing closed. The matter is back before the council, I'll query council one more time if you have any questions or comments for staff before we entertain these motions. With that, colleagues, I'll entertain motion number one to adopt an ordinance annexing 631 and 633 Clayton Road into the city of Durham effective September 30th, and to authorize the city manager, city manager to enter into a utility extension agreement with Windmore 208 LLC. For move? I heard a motion from Councilmember Williams and I heard a motion from Councilmember Williams and a second from Councilmember Caballero. Madam Clerk, would you please open the vote? Please close the vote and report out.
The motion passes 4 to 3 with Mayor O'Neill and Councilmembers Freeman and Hosea Hyman voting no.
Thank you. For motion number two, I'll adopt, I'll entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance by taking property out of the residential suburban 20, RS 20, Falls/Jordan District-B, F/JB, and establishing the same-as residential suburban multifamily with the development plan, RSMD, Falls/Jordan District-B, F/JB. So moved.
Second.
Error motion from Councilmember Williams and a second from Councilmember Johnson. Madam Clerk, would you please open the vote? Please close the vote and report out.
The motion passes 4 to 3 with Mayor O'Neill and Councilmembers Freeman and Hosea Hyman voting no.
Thank you. And finally, motion number three, I'll entertain a motion to adopt a consistency statement as required by NCGS 160D-605. So moved.
Second.
Error motion from Councilmember Williams and a second from Councilmember Johnson. Madam Clerk, would you please open the vote? Would you please close the vote and report out?
The motion passes 7-0.
Thank you very much. This matter is disposed of. I'll yield back to her honor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, for carrying us through. We are now at the other matters portion of our agenda. Are there any other items to claim our attention this evening? Seeing none, we will move to adjourn at 10:50 PM on August 7th, Monday, August 7, 2023, here in City Hall Chambers. Do a city strong. Good work.